The July 1st, 2019 meeting of the Anarundel County Council is now in session. Please stand for the invocation. A man standing for the Pledge of Allegiance. Councilwoman Lacy will lead us in the invocation introduction.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I invite Delegate Heather Bagnall to give the invocation today in honor of July 4th. She will recite "The New Colossus," which is the sonnet inscribed on our Statue of Liberty. "Not like the brazen giant of Greek fame with conquering limbs astride from land to land, here at our sea-washed sunset gates shall stand a mighty woman with a torch, whose flame is the imprisoned lightning, and her name, Mother of Exiles. From her beacon-hand glows worldwide welcome; her mild eyes command the air-brigged harbor the twin cities frame. Keep, ancient lands, your story pomp, cry she with silent lips; give me your tired, your poor, your huddled masses yearning to breathe free, the wretched refuse of your teeming shore; send these, the homeless tempest toss to me; I lift my lamp beside the golden
Pledge of Allegiance?
Pledge of Allegiance, through the flag, the United States of America, 230 public office, which stands one nation, one God, indivisible, with liberty and justice.
Good evening, everyone. It's nice to see so many people here tonight. Must be an important meeting. I do want to start off by, Madam Secretary, please read the Ethics Statement.
The Ethics Commission has asked that I advise you that under certain circumstances, members of the public may qualify as lobbyists when they testify before the county council. If so, the law requires that certain information be filed with the Ethics Commission. The Chairman of the Ethics Commission has asked that those present review the Ethics Commission information in the foyer of these chambers. If there are any questions about lobbying requirements, speakers should contact the Ethics Commission in the Heritage Office complex on Reva Road.
Thank you, Madam Secretary. This portion, we're now going to invite members of the audience who signed up before the meeting to address the council briefly on any subject not included in the printed agenda. Remarks are limited to two minutes. I'd ask that you come forward, state your name and address. We have Ms. Sandra German. Ms. German, right at the table. Yep. Just name and address, and the clock's right down here. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Sandra German. I live at 310 Broadway Avenue, Glen Burnie, 21061. And I just have some concerns. I am the President of the only umbrella group in Anarundel County, so I am the voice of many speaking. We have lost hours at a firehouse, and we are here speaking to help police and firemen. Meanwhile, one of the most critical firehouses that is responsible for the homeless camp, that is responsible for CSL Plasma, what goes on at Cromwell Shopping Center, the light rail at Cromwell and Ferndale. It's bad enough that we're over 125 officers short, but to cut a firehouse that is now non-operational. This week alone, within the weekend, we had a neighbor giving CPR to a 96-year-old woman waiting 15 minutes for a response. We had a nine-month-old. The babysitter was watching with two younger children, nine and eight. The nine-month-old got a hold of something choked. We did not have a firehouse to respond. The closest it to our district would have been Lythicum. For some reason, they are told not to respond to our area. We have to wait for Odington. We have to wait for Brooklyn. We almost lost two lives this week, and we believe that is too many. We also had a gang rape that took over 30 minutes for us to get attention. So I'm asking you, as the council, to please investigate this, because across the street we seem to be operating six illegal businesses that have been brought to executive shoes attention, and executive pitmen that took the tour. And if we can operate six illegal businesses that have no building permits, no occupancy permits, pay no taxes, and are no benefit, why would, that's a contradiction, to shut down a firehouse, which is a benefit?
Thank you, Ms. German. At this point, is...
Chairman?
Yep.
I like my two minutes.
Sure. Anyone who else did not sign up that'd like to come forward, that's not on the printed agenda, your name and address?
John Grosso.
Councilman Grosso, good to see you.
See him here. 6 Lamar Road, Gumbrandy, Maryland. Counsel, I'm not here on a pleasant note today, and actually, all night long, it's not going to be a pleasant conversation, okay? And I'm going to start off with the despicable budget that you folks passed, and I'm not going to blame all of you. It really saddens me that the county executive pitman turns around and sends a budget down, and that you folks actually approved it. And the part that gets to me more than anything is that you went after people's property taxes. We're over here talking, these people here want to buy houses, or what it sounds like workforce housing, but they're not going to be able to afford it either, because you've went after their property tax, and you've raised that. If that wasn't bad enough, the money wasn't there, so what was the next thing you did? You went after these people's paycheck. The same teachers, the fire department, and the people that you're supposed to be happening, you did the piggyback tax. So, folks, I just want to let you know that your paycheck just got smaller, and your property taxes have gone up. So I just can't understand the hypocrisy and the hypocrites that are a part of this council. Why would you allow something like that to happen? Ms. Pickard, I hate to pick on you, but you're going to get it a few times tonight, because you're representing my district, so I apologize if I offend you, but you're just going to have to take it. You made a comment, well, we need the money. Okay, I get that. We need the money. Well, perhaps you'd like to follow my lead, okay, and give your salary back like I did for eight years. I always believe in lead by leadership, and I think that people would probably appreciate it more so if you turned around and told everybody here that you were going to donate your salary back to charitable causes in Anarundel County, just like I did. That's how you lead by leadership. You just don't say, "We need money." And I could tell you one story. I went around the neighborhood, and I met this elderly woman, and I got to the front door of her house, and she just started crying. Started crying. I remember her, because her husband's name was John, and she said to me, "Sir, I don't know how I'm going to be able to afford to live in Anarundel County anymore." And I'd hate to go back to that woman right now and tell her that the council that's here just upped her taxes. So congratulations.
Thank you, Mr. Johnson.
Julie Johnson, PO Box 6634, Annapolis, Maryland. I'd like to thank those of you who have helped me in response to my request for help. It's too long, what I've got is too long for two minutes, so I'll focus on one thing. I did ask for the Health Department to provide records that I think almost could have been done under a Freedom of Information Act, because, to the best of my knowledge, these are public documents. Specifically, I believe that every agency in the county has a book that has the rules, regulations, policies, and procedures, and so forth, for all county employees, as well as for the particular employees of a particular department. And so, in particular, I'm going to focus my comments on the Health Department, where the Health Department, as you may know, provides waivers to people so that they can have smaller setbacks for their septic systems, which means they're saying, "You, Mr. Builder or Developer, gets to use the ground and soil of your neighbor to absorb the human wastes from the occupants of your properties." So I was told that they have a hearing process, which would sound logical. So what I have asked for, in addition to the book, is copies of the form letters to notify such neighbors of what's going on. I would presume that they created a file and a record. I mean, if you're going to have hearings, and you're going to conduct, and you're going to do these kinds of things of taking and giving, I think you need to have a record of that. If you have hearings, surely somebody has a calendar, or a docket, or, you know, a laundry list, a spreadsheet, and I would like to see those.
Ms. Johnson, please, please lower eyes.
Okay. So I would ask, several of you asked if there's something you could do specifically, and I would ask you to help me get these documents, which, to the best of my knowledge, are public records. Thanks so much.
Thank you, Ms. Johnson. I don't see any other movement in the audience, so the invitation to the audience is now closed. Is there any item, any council member that'd like to place on the agenda that's not listed? Seeing no movement, we will move forward. May I have a motion that the partial reading of any bill resolution, amendment to a bill resolution, or minutes constitutes the reading of the whole?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion carries. Madam Secretary, please read the minutes of June 5th, June 7th, June 10th, June 14th, and June 17th, 2019.
June 5th, 2019, the meeting was called to order by Chairman Andrew Pruski at 9:50 a.m. and opened with the invocation given by Mr. Volkey, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance. June 7th, 2019, the meeting was called to order by Chairman Pruski at 2:00 p.m. and opened with the invocation given by Mr. Pruski, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance. June 10th, 2019, the meeting was called to order by Chairman Pruski at 2:04 p.m. and opened with the invocation given by Ms. Fiedler, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance. June 14th, 2019, the meeting was called to order by Chairman Pruski at 9:39 a.m. and opened with the invocation given by Ms. Rodvian, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance. June 17th, 2019, the meeting was called to order by Chairman Pruski at 7:00 p.m. and opened with the invocation given by Ms. Hare, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance led by Boy Scout Troop 855.
Thank you, Madam Secretary. Now that you're out of breath, let's see if we can get a motion to approve these minutes of June 5th, 7th, 10th, 14th, and 7th, 2019. Do I hear a motion?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion carries. The minutes of June 5th, 7th, 10th, 14th, and 17th, 2019 stand approved as read. Madam Secretary, please read the titles of the bills to be introduced this evening.
Bill Number 1619, An Ordnance Concerning Personnel Positions in the Classified Service. Bill Number 6119, An Ordnance Concerning Personnel Exempt Service, Director of Communications and Policy, Deputy Chief Administrative Officer, Executive Program Manager, and Executive Budget and Management Analyst. Bill Number 6219, An Ordnance Concerning Zoning Private Clubs.
Thank you, Madam Secretary. Please read the titles of the resolutions to be introduced this evening.
Resolution Number 2819, Resolution Approving Estimates of the Annual Costs of Providing Health Insurance Benefits and the Employee Subsidies Used to Determine the Rates for Certain Participants Under the County Employee and Retiree Health Benefits Program. Bill Number 2919, Resolution Concerning a Petition to the Maryland Higher Education Commission for Anarundel Community College Funding. Resolution Number 3019, Resolution Confirming the Appointments of Members to Serve on the Personnel Board for Anarundel County.
Thank you, Madam Secretary. Could you please read the title of Bill Number 5119?
Bill Number 5119, An Ordnance Concerning the Issue and Sale and Delivery of Anarundel County, Maryland General Obligation Bonds and Bond Anticipation Notes.
Mr. Barron and the administration, would you like to speak on this legislation? It's like you have a whole crew.
Good evening. I'll wait for folks to get settled real quick. For the record, Pete Barron with the, okay. For the record, Pete Barron, Office of the County Executive. With me at the table, from Finance, is Karen McQuade and Lori Anne Tony. We have our Bond Counsel, Mr. Bill Hen, and from Office of Law, Lori Klausmeyer is in the audience. So 5119 is the Annual Bond Ordinance Concerning the Issue and Sale and Delivery of the County's General Obligation Bonds and Bond Anticipation Notes or Bands. Bands are issued in the form of a line of credit, which are short-term loans. The purpose of this ordinance is to authorize the issuance of bands not to exceed $400 million, and bonds not to exceed $1,738,274, to finance the county's FY-20-approved capital budget. The ordinance also authorizes the issuance of refunding bonds to refund some or all of the outstanding bond issues, and not to exceed 120% of the aggregate principal amount of the outstanding bonds. All information was presented to the county auditor for review. We will offer an amendment, just to give you a heads-up, at the appropriate time to deal with certain dollar amounts and some technical updates. But to be clear, it will be not a technical amendment, because it will deal with some dollar corrections. I would like to introduce, at this moment, Mr. Bill Hen, the county's Bond Counsel, who worked with Finance to prepare the bond ordinance, and anybody else that thinks it's appropriate to speak up.
Sure. If you want to.
You want me to start? We have prepared, let me introduce my partner, David Gregory, who worked, did a significant amount of work on this project, as well as me. We have prepared the annual borrowing ordinance for Anarundel County. The customary practice in the county has been to prepare an ordinance every year after the capital budget is approved, authorizing debt to fund everything that is appropriated and approved in the capital budget. The ordinance authorizes debt for that purpose. It authorizes refunding bonds, and there's a specified list of prior bond issues that will be allowed to be refunded pursuant to this ordinance. Essentially, all of the outstanding general obligation debt of the county is set forth as a candidate for refunding. The ordinance also authorizes bond anticipation notes, which may be issued in anticipation of the bonds. The ordinance also authorizes the form of the bond, the form of the notice of sale, requires that the bonds, the so-called new-money bonds for new projects, to be sold competitively in accordance with the requirements of the charter. The bond anticipation notes and the refunding bonds, consistent with state law, may be either sold competitively or sold on a negotiated basis, based on a determination made by the county executive at the time of the funding. The bonds are general obligation bonds of the county, secured by the full faith and credit of the county, subject to the limitations on the tax cap and the charter. I think that is the main outline of the ordinance, and the ordinance in form repeals the annual borrowing ordinance last year, and this replaces that ordinance and gives the county legal authority to conduct financial operations for the next year along a number of different fronts, as I have described. Thank you.
Any other comments from the administration?
Don't with that...
Okay, Councilman Volkey.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Question for the administration, on page 29 of the bill, lines 1, 2, and 3, specifically section 9, it notes that this particular bill, in addition to all of the bond provisions that we've discussed, provides by an affirmative vote that the council is effectively giving the administration the authority to exercise eminent domain in the acquisition of any land parcels acquired for projects herein before described in this ordinance. I'm assuming that that effectively gives the council blessing to any eminent domain acts that the administration wants to take to try to affect these capital projects? Am I reading that correctly?
I'm going to ask Office of Law to come up at the table, if that's possible.
Can you repeat the line number again?
Sure. It's page 29, lines 1, 2, and 3, very top of the page, section 9.
That's correct.
So that's what that's saying. Typically, you would have to come in front of the council for each one of those exercises to ask us if we were going to authorize the county to exercise eminent domain. Is that right?
I apologize. I don't know. I know that there is a state action that has to occur in respect to eminent domain. I can't say that I've ever, it's not something we do frequently. I'm not sure when the last time we even did one was, so it's not something that we've done recently.
Would the administration have any objection to removing that specific section in the bill?
I would ask Bill Hen. They drafted it.
No, I don't think it would affect the ability of the county to borrow for the general purposes of funding the capital budget. So I don't think that would impair the basic financing logic here at all.
And I think that is the issue.
I'm actually going to, I see Greg Swain coming up. So I'm going to...
Good evening. Greg Swain, county attorney. Despite the language in the bill, each individual eminent domain proceeding still requires separate council approval, and would be bought before council.
So then what's the purpose of having it here in this bill?
That I'm not sure.
Okay. So again, would the administration have any objection to taking that out of this particular bill?
With that description, if we still, I'm sorry. According to Mr. Swain, if we still have to come before council, I see no reason for it to be in the bill.
Perfect. Okay. Thank you.
Are there any other questions before we go to the public hearing? Madam Auditor, did you want to chime in? Obviously, this is a bond bill. I didn't know if you wanted to add anything.
I can just say, this is fairly common for them to bring down the bond ordinance, and it's usually based on the proposed budget, as this budget is, and then we review it, but also they provide us with the amendments, so we can look at making sure it agrees with the final budget, and our office has done that, and these amendments will come up, you know, to be voted at the next meeting. But that's what we do when we review the bond ordinance, if that helps.
Thank you for the clarification.
Thanks.
At this point, let's open it up for public hearing. Remarks are going to be limited to two minutes. I do not have anyone sign up for record. If there's anyone that'd like to come forward to speak on 5119, please do so at this time. I see Ms. Johnson coming forward. If there's anybody else, please come now.
Julie Johnson, PO Box 6634, Annapolis, Maryland. I think you all know what I'm going to say. We keep borrowing money. We're going to burden you, your children, grandchildren, and when you look at the interest alone on what we're borrowing, you need to look at the terrible potential consequences. There is also a matter that, right now, we are the petrodollars, and so we can keep printing money till the cows come home, never mind what it's worth. But there are countries in the world who are looking to overthrow that, and they want to become, you know, the petrocurrency. And if that happens, there was a guy on C-SPAN who said, "And we will be like Venezuela," or maybe Greece, or one of those other countries whose economies have completely collapsed. And I do hope that you will seriously consider this business of overspending. You know, and the crushing tax burden that you put on future generations. Thanks so much.
Thank you, Ms. Johnson. Seeing no other movement in the audience, the public hearing on Bill Number 5119 is now closed. Madam Secretary, please read the title of Bill Number 5119.
Bill Number 5119, An Ordnance Concerning the Issue and Sale and Delivery of Anarundel County, Maryland General Obligation Bonds and Bond Anticipation Notes.
Okay, is there any initial discussion on what was presented? We do have an amendment. Madam Secretary, please read Amendment Number 1.
Amendment Number 1, this amendment increases the amount of bond anticipation note authority, decreases the amount of bond authority, and corrects certain amounts in the bill to conform to the final capital budget.
Is there a motion to adopt? Is there a second?
Second.
Okay. Would you like to speak on the amendment?
Sure. Just, this bill corrects the amounts in the legislation to conform to the final capital budget.
Any further discussion on this amendment? Ms. Councilwoman Hare?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. And I just want to clarify, Madam Auditor, you looked at these specific numbers to make sure they matched?
Yes. We'll have our formal in the next blue letter, saying that we agreed it, but yes, we went ahead and looked at that.
Okay.
Okay, seeing no further discussion. Madam Secretary, could you please call the roll on Amendment Number 1?
Ms. Hare?
Aye.
Ms. Lacy?
Aye.
Ms. Pickard?
Aye.
Mr. Volkey?
Aye.
Ms. Fiedler?
Aye.
Ms. Rodvian?
Aye.
Mr. Pruski?
Aye.
Seven of the affirmative, none of the negative. Amendment Number 1 is adopted.
Councilman Volkey?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I have an amendment that takes care of that situation I was just referencing with respect to eminent domain. So I have that prepared. I think it's going to circulate in just a moment, but I just wanted to advise the council.
Okay. Well, the first thing we do, why don't we, do you have Amendment Number 1, Madam Secretary, to read into the record, or?
What?
Excuse me, Amendment Number 2.
No, I don't.
Okay. If we can get the Madam Secretary a copy. Madam Secretary, please read Amendment Number 2.
Amendment Number 2, this amendment removes a provision that allows the county to exercise eminent domain in certain circumstances.
Is there a motion to adopt?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay. As the sponsor, would you like to speak on this?
Sure. Thank you. So, Mr. Chair, as I just noted with the administration, the amendment is removing an unnecessary portion of the bill, so with that, I think that just makes sense to pass it.
Administration, do you have a response to the amendment, or?
Yeah, as, based on what the Office of Law has said, I see no reason for that provision to be in the bill. We weren't planning, as far as I know, to exercise any of that, and since we would have to come before the council anyway, it probably makes sense to get rid of it. So, we're okay.
Thank you. So seeing no further discussion, Madam Secretary, could you please call the roll on Amendment Number 2?
Aye.
Ms. Lacy?
Given that Bond Counsel does not object to the striking of section 9, aye.
Ms. Pickard?
Aye.
Mr. Volkey?
Aye.
Ms. Fiedler?
Aye.
Ms. Rodvian?
Aye.
Mr. Pruski?
Aye.
Seven of the affirmative, none of the negative. Amendment Number 2 is adopted.
So Bill Number 5119, as amended, will be heard at the next meeting, which is July 15th. Moving forward, Madam Secretary, please read the title of Bill Number 5419.
Bill Number 5419, An Ordnance Concerning Zoning Workforce Housing.
Okay, before we, this is an administration bill, but before we turn that over, I am the lead co-sponsor. I just want to make a few comments. Please understand that this has gotten a lot of attention, and we're going to have wonderful debate, obviously, with respect, but I do want to make everyone clear that there's certainly a lot of work that needs to be done in Anarundel County, and you're going to hear testimony from folks here tonight about the past history in terms of what we have for our teachers, firefighters, and police, and working families. And I ask that people pay close attention, to listen what, obviously, to be said, but let me clearly state that I've opposed the initial bill. You know, my colleague was here in 2015 that limited what's there, and certainly, looking forward to the debate today, but I know the administration probably wants to chime in with a little bit more in terms of the purpose of the bill, what it's glued, because I know there's a lot of misinformation being shared. So at this point, Mr. Barron? Thank you.
Sure. Pete Barron with the County Executive's Office. With me at the table, from Office of Planning and Zoning, is Ms. Lori Rhodes, from Department of Public Works, Mr. Chris Phipps from ACDS, from the Community Development Service, Ms. Kathy Koch from Housing, Mr. Cliff Martin from Law, Mr. Greg Swain. Yes, I do think, really quickly, just to sort of lay out what the folks at the table will do, I'll give a couple of remarks. Ms. Koch has some things to say and add, and everybody else at the table is here to happy to answer any questions the council may have. First, I do want to thank the chairman and the number of council members who sponsored this legislation. And just like the chairman said, this bill has generated a lot of conversation, and that's good. The county executive has met with advocates for housing who think this bill does not go far enough. He has met with advocates who think that this bill goes too far. Hopefully, tonight, we'll hear from people who think this bill is just right. We will hear from folks from both sides, and that's a good thing. We need to keep talking. We need to keep listening. That is what separates Anarundel County from the broken politics of DC. What we are talking about here is housing for our neighbors. Let's take a second to separate rhetoric and fear from the discussion and focus on the facts. Will this bill fix the affordable housing crisis in the county? No. Will this bill put workforce housing development on every corner, on every available parcel? No. What will this bill do, and why do we need it? This bill takes a step to reverse the bill from the previous council. It passed in 2015, but the bill number is 8214, which effectively killed the creation of workforce housing in this county. It passed in 2015, but the bill number is 8214, which effectively killed the creation of workforce housing in this county. Before 8214, workforce housing was a special exemption in R2 and R5. This bill does not go that far. A policy goal of the 2009 GDP, pages 42 to 45, is to increase the supply of workforce housing units in the county. Since that document was produced, housing affordability in this county has gotten worse. We have not built enough affordable workforce housing units. In 2006, the Chamber of Commerce Task Force noted, "A lack of workforce housing in this county is negatively affecting our businesses." This has an economic impact on our communities. Over the next four years, it's estimated an additional 1,174 households will not be able to find housing in our county that they can afford. Our county employees often struggle to live here. Raw numbers, our fire department, something like 30% of the county's fire department employees live in the county. Our detention officers, 51% live in the county. Our public works officers, the backbone of our infrastructure, almost just over two-thirds are able to live in this county. So how does this bill work? It provides an incentive through the zoning code to encourage developers to build new affordable workforce housing units. It allows a developer to build housing in commercial zones, in light industrial zones, at a density of 22 units per acre, as long as the development meets certain conditions. It allows for 22 units per acre in R5, R10, and R15 zones, as long as conditions are met. And it reduces the water and sewer connection fees. So what are these conditions? The property must be located on a collector or higher classification road. The property must be served by both public water and sewer. At least 40% of the homeownership units must be occupied by a household with an income that does not exceed 100% of the area median income. At least 60% of the rental units must be occupied by a household with an income that does not exceed 60% of the median income. All adequate public facilities tests must be met, school capacity, road and utility tests. Impact fees must be paid. All environmental rules must be obeyed, including critical area. All other zoning requirements must be met, parking, recreation, et cetera. We do have a technical amendment, which I'll discuss at the appropriate time. With that, I'd like to turn it over to Ms. Koch, who has done a fantastic job under now both Democrat and Republican administrations, working to provide housing in our county.
Thank you. Thank you, Peter. Okay, not to reiterate everything, but I'll just quickly go through a few things, just to remind you about the need. I know you're all very familiar with the need. 46% of our renters in our county are paying more than 30% of their income toward rent. Our housing commission has over 17,000 people on their waiting list, waiting for assistance. A recent study found that in just four years, over 1,000 households in this county will not be able to find housing they can afford. As Mr. Barron said, it's a very complicated issue. We don't expect to solve the issue with this piece of legislation. But what we're trying to do is just add another tool to the toolbox, another item to help us address this issue. 5419 creates an incentive on the land use side, but in return for that incentive, we are asking for a whole lot. In return for this incentive, the developer must provide 60% of the units affordable to families at 60% and below of the median income. Not an easy thing to do. With land costs and construction costs at all-time highs, it will be difficult for the developer to make these numbers work. Let's compare a market rate deal to an affordable housing deal. The amount of rent one collects in affordable housing is approximately one-third of what one collects in a market rate housing development. And what does that mean? That means the affordable housing deal can only borrow from the bank one-third of what the market rate deal can borrow. Yet both projects cost the same amount to build. So this is where public financing comes in. The developer, the affordable housing community, has to find other sources to fill the gap created by the fact that he can't borrow as much as the market rate developer. And as you know, public financing is limited and very competitive. In fact, the state of Maryland, the one who provides the bulk of our public financing for these projects, is only able to fund approximately 40% of the projects that they receive applications for. So as you can see, even with proper zoning, it is complicated and difficult to provide housing. Based on these facts, we are projecting that at least one project will be, get built in the next few years, 60 new units. Which in our minds is one step forward, because although 60 units does not seem like a lot in relationship to the need, it's 60 more units than what we have today. So the important thing to look at also is that most of these projects not only need public financing on the construction side, oftentimes, they also need public financing help on the operating side. Many developers request what we call a payment in lieu of taxes, which is a mechanism for reducing property taxes, which thereby reduces the operating expenses. This arrangement requires county council approval, which means that many of these projects will be coming back before the county council for approval. A good safeguard, ensuring that projects are located in appropriate locations. So the legislation, as Mr. Barron said, provides safeguards to ensure these developments occur in proper location. They have to be on water and sewer, collector or hire, and most importantly, meet road test and school test. So this legislation, again, as we stated, it provides housing for our teachers, policemen, and firemen, who are just starting out from their careers. It provides housing for those taking care of our elderly parents and our children, and it provides housing for many in the service industry. Housing available to all income limits helps us create a strong, diverse, more economically strong community. So I encourage you to support Bill 5419. We'll answer any questions you have.
Thank you. So we'll open up for council initial questions. Anybody, we'll start over here with Councilwoman Fiedler, and then go back.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The last council passed Bill 1718, which put a moratorium on rezoning. Are there any legal ramifications for this bill passing in light of Bill 1718?
Greg Swain, County Attorney. No, that bill was on administrative rezonings. Bill 5419 does not rezone any property. It simply adds an additional use to existing zoning. The zoning on the properties do not change, so this is more what we call a zoning text amendment versus an actual rezoning. So no, Bill 1718 would not impact 5419.
So even, even though in R5, we're increasing to 22 units per acre, it's not considered rezoning?
Well, the underlying parcels that would be considered workforce housing would not be rezoned. They would still remain R5. So no, it's not a rezoning.
But they're attached to our, they're attached to different bulk regulations, is what I'm getting to.
They are, exactly.
Thank you.
Councilwoman Hare?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. A couple of questions. What, at what point during the process does someone declare that they're going to build workforce housing? Is it at a sketch plan or a preliminary? How does that work practically speaking?
Lori Rhodes, Assistant Planning and Zoning Officer, Planning and Zoning. The developer would approach the county like any other project. They would submit and meet the criteria, make sure that they have all of the approvals before they, I mean, could obtain all the approvals before they file an application. So it's something that they would have to submit site development plan and all the approvals that would be needed for any other type of development.
Is there any concern or any thought process? I mean, right now, we have sort of certain things where you can build age-restricted homes, but then sometimes they don't stay age-restricted homes. Is that a concern or a possibility under this bill, or how would that work?
I don't work on the development side, but I do know that they have to have community meetings to keep everyone informed about the project. So if they were to change the age, again, a community meeting would be required as part of the development process.
And one of the additional components of workforce housing is the properties restricted.
For 10 years?
So you wouldn't be able to shift it to an additional use. You'd still have to obey the income restrictions.
Okay. Maybe this is a silly question, and I apologize, but when I read this, I see that you can build any type, any, you know, mixture, et cetera, et cetera. And then paragraph 2II talks about 40% of the homeownership units being occupied. And then the paragraph below that is 60% of rental units. So if I build 100 units on a property and I make them, can I make them all homeownership units, but only 40% of them have to be reserved for 100% of the median income?
Yes.
And no rental units? The other 60 can be market rate units?
Right, yes.
Okay. Conversely, I could build 100 units and 60 of them need to be rent, if I'm going to make them all rentals, 60 of them are rental units. Okay.
Forty or not. Or you could combine them and have 40% of your units be ownership units, and all of them would be restricted. The other 60% could be rental units, and all of them would be restricted, because the percentages are on the whole project.
Well, that, I read this as saying 40% of the homeownership units. So if you have 100 units and you make 40 of them homeownership units and 60 of them rental units, then 40% of the 40 units would have to be restricted to the income, right? So 16 of those homeownership units?
That's right, yeah.
That's the way I read this.
Forty percent, that's right. Forty percent of the ownership.
Of the ownership units?
Or the rental units.
Okay. Okay. And I, again, I assume, Mr. Swain, that you looked at this, but there's no, it strikes me, it raises a red flag that we are limiting a deed, that someone who purchases the home now in eight years is restricted as to who they sell the property to. That's, we don't run into any legal ramifications there?
No, no. I know other jurisdictions have as much as a 30-year restriction on ownership units.
Okay. If the prior bill had a special exception in R5, what's the rationale between going to conditional use now in R5 as opposed to back to a special exception in R5? And I ask that because I've gotten personally a number of emails today, and fewer in the past few days, but a lot today. And the biggest thing that I'm seeing is this R5, it has the appearance of suddenly going from five units per acre to 22 units per acre without even needing a community meeting. And if transparency and community input is the goal, I'm struggling a little bit with the conditional use versus the special exception in R5 particularly.
A conditional use would require a community meeting, whereas a special exception would require a public hearing. And one of the requirements of the special exception is that they prove to the administrative hearing officer that they can meet the test of need. The difference between the two is one is a public hearing. It can be approved by the administrative hearing officer, where the conditional use still requires the community meeting, but does not require the public hearing to prove the test of need.
Right. The conditional use is sort of presumptively appropriate, right, in that area?
Conditional use can be used as a tool for this type of housing.
Right, so, okay, so then what's the rationale for using conditional use versus special exception if we're talking about additional community input and having that public hearing where, as opposed to, you know, where they have to show that need?
So, I feel that this is a use, this is a use that we find a need for, and adding a public hearing as part of that requirement, to me undermines the incentive of trying to incentivize this housing.
Now, I'll add.
Go ahead.
No, I'll add that under the prior version of workforce housing before, I think it was Bill 8414, in the, in the history of that legislation, we only had one application. Is that correct, Ms. Koch? Just one?
We had one application, yes.
Right. So it wasn't, the whole, I think the whole purpose of making it conditional use versus special exception is again, to incentivize the use, because it wasn't working before.
Okay. And it's my understa, oh, I'm sorry, go ahead.
No, no, I was just going to say, I think to reiterate those great points is also the financing to put these projects together is extremely difficult. So this is not going to open up a floodgate.
Okay. And it's my understanding the adequate public facilities still have to be met, so the schools have to be open?
Yes.
Okay. Stormwater, just for a second, because, and I apologize, thank you all, a lot of questions. But the stormwater piece of this, obviously, we heard a lot about stormwater on the campaign trail. We hear a lot about it now. There's a bigger sort of allowable coverage in here than in other spots. Was stormwater a consideration? Have we thought about this? Any comments on that?
I mean, stormwater is an extremely concerning issue across the county. I know I've heard from many of folks, I know our constituent services, folks hear about it all the time. Be happy to work with you on other legislation that would address that. We did think about this, but again, the number of units we're talking about is very small. You see in the fiscal note where we're expecting very few, and they still have to obey all the other rules when you build here in the county.
Do we have any other, I think this is my last question, do we have any other sort of guidance about how the rental rates or the sale and whatnot would be determined under paragraph, it looks like it's paragraph eight in here? It just says that it's established by the developer and approved by the county. Is it approved by the council? Is it approved by the county executive, or it says, or it's designee? How are we determining those rates in?
So the rates are based on what somebody, 60%. So the, the income limits are published by HUD on an annual basis, so that's very well documented, and it's stuff we use for all our existing programs. The rents will be, using the rents established for the low-income housing tax credit program, which is a federally established program.
Okay.
And those rents are also published on an annual basis, and are set for people at 60% and below, so there will be.
So it's very formulaic?
Very formulaic, no guessing coming to it.
Okay, thank you.
Now, as far as homeownership, again, this is a program, we've done this for, ACDS has done this for the last 25 years, and we have written policies and procedures on exactly how we establish the price for a house based on an income.
Okay. And so then who does the actual approving? Is it the county executive, the county council, who actually? It just says by the county, or it's designee? Who?
One would assume that the county would designate Anaronda Community Development Services as that agency.
Okay.
And that we would designate those incomes and also the rents, and that we would also, on an annual basis, be out there, especially a rental project, monitoring it on an annual basis to ensure that they're meeting those requirements.
Okay, thank you. That's all I got.
Councilwoman Volkey?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Let me just make sure I understand the road classifications correctly. We start off, the biggest roads are arterial roads, right?
Yes.
Okay. And then we move down to minor arterial roads, and then we move down to collector roads. Is that right?
Yes.
Okay.
Going down to local.
Now, the previous iteration of this bill indicated that a development of this scale and scope, where we're potentially putting 22 units per acre in R5, and at that time, by the way, R5 was not an option, it was even just R10. That required that these developments be located on minor arterial roads. Is that right?
You're talking about the previous?
The current version of what the code is, absent this bill that's in front of us?
Yes.
Okay. So we are now actually decreasing the road classification. So we're actually saying you can put these on a smaller road, and we're actually moving this into a lower-density area but giving a bigger bump. Am I understanding that correctly?
We've reduced the road classification to collector.
Right.
Or higher.
Okay. So we theoretically are going to wind up with 22 units per acre in an R5 district that could be on a collector road, as opposed to what we had before, which was potentially 22 units in an R10 district on a minor arterial road. Am I understanding that correctly?
Correct.
Okay.
And the collector road means a road that provides primary access to an arterial road. From one or more neighborhoods, allows for traffic circulation within residential, commercial, and industrial areas, and for the internal distribution of trips within a neighborhood, and may provide access to local roads, other collector roads, and abutting roads. So it isn't uncommon, whether it's R5 to R22, to have collector roads serve those residential neighborhoods. It's usually based on the intensity, the residential zone, as to type of roads that you would have.
Sure. But we don't have anywhere else in the code that allows you to get a density bump from R5 to R22, do we?
Yes, we do.
Okay.
We have, and I actually have my, we have an MXDT, the dwelling units, 22 dwelling units are allowed in MXDT.
And we're in a mixed, that's a mixed-use development?
In a mixed-use transportation.
Right, okay.
And then also the maximum net density for adult independent dwellings. And then also the maximum net density for adult independent dwellings is twenty-two units per acre.
Gotcha.
And C two and C three.
Okay.
This does not include overlay districts such as the parole growth management area, the Odenton Town Center, where you may find densities similar to this.
Okay. I want to walk through sort of the income differentiator, or the reference, if you will. The, the administration and my colleagues on the council who've put together this bill have selected the Baltimore Primary Metropolitan Statistical Area, the BPMSA, as the reference, so to speak, right? Now, I guess my question would be, currently, the BPMSA lists the median income in this area at seventy-seven thousand, three hundred and ninety-four dollars. That's what I understand that number to be. And sixty percent of that figure would be forty-six thousand, four hundred and thirty-six dollars. Am I?
So, so this is a very scientific thing that's actually put out by HUD across the country every single year, and it's, it's only indicator that we really have that's that consistent and that clearly defined. It's adjusted by household size also, so.
I get you, I just, I just want to make sure I'm right on, I just want to make sure I'm right on the number. The number I have is seventy-seven, three ninety-four is the median income in this area.
Okay, I have for a family of four, someone at a hundred percent of the median income is a hundred and one. I only have it adjusted by family size, so I can't confirm your number.
Okay, and I think the administration and the fact sheet that we got was actually using the average income, or the median income, excuse me, for the county, not based off the BPMSA indicator.
I don't believe that's correct, I believe it was off the BPM.
Well, if you guys could get that for me, I'd appreciate it, because I guess where I'm going with this is, if you look at what a first-year teacher in this county with a bachelor's could make, they would make forty-six thousand, eight hundred and ninety-eight dollars. So at sixty percent of that median income on the BPMSA, that individual will not even qualify for one of these rental units. They would qualify for the housing, but they would not qualify for the rental. And the same is true for an entry-level police officer who starts off making fifty-two thousand, five hundred dollars. Again, that individual would not qualify for a rental under the sixty percent threshold.
That's if they're a family of one.
Okay.
That's not what we usually find.
Okay.
A lot of them have a child or else have somebody else in the household with them, so.
Okay, but if they were saying, going, starting off in the county and they were a household of one, they would be disqualified from this.
Sixty percent or less.
Yeah.
I think the struggle I'm getting at is, frankly, I don't think that this BPMSA is the right metric that we should be using for this, and I am going to be introducing an amendment that says that we should actually look at what the U.S. Census Bureau says is the median income for the county, which frankly, the last time they put it out in two thousand seventeen was ninety-four thousand, so that substantially increases it and actually increases the pool of people who would be eligible for this. So if we frankly want to be helping these folks that we say we're helping, that makes a lot more sense to me.
Could you please not clap? I understand that people may agree, but we have a lot to get through and everyone testify. I ask that you hold your comments and applause. I really appreciate trying to respect everyone, but I do want to get through and I want to make sure that the councilman gets his time as well.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, appreciate it.
We'll, we'll discuss the amendment when, when we see it.
Certainly.
And, but I just, I do want to say, let's not forget, there are a lot of people in this county that, you know, whether they're a teacher or whether they're a home care worker, will fit under the definition as we're stated.
Understood.
In no way are we going to, and I'm happy to work with you to, to get to a hundred percent of meeting the need in this county, but we have, we are in no way going to be able to fix this with just one piece of legislation. This is not a magic bullet.
Understood, I think just, my concern is the sell on this has been that this is about helping police and firefighters and teachers who are the backbone of our public sector employees in this county, and ensuring that those folks who work here can also live here, and I want to make sure this bill is doing that. And frankly, as written, I don't think it does that. I had another question for the administration. If we look at eighteen-ten-one-fifty-eight-two of the proposed bill, here's my question. If somebody currently rents a unit that is allowed under this, and they're making less than sixty percent, or even less than a hundred percent for the purchase, and then they get a raise, are they going to be kicked out?
No, the way the program works is that they must make the next available unit available to the income requirement.
Okay.
So displacement is totally discouraged through this process.
So you're, so no one's going to get kicked out? So, again, if someone starts off and they have a very low salary, but then all of a sudden they get a bunch of raises, now all of a sudden that person could, who has plenty of money to go elsewhere, continue to live in these units, taking a unit away from someone else who does need it and is still not making that money?
Again, it's sixty percent of the total units, so the very next unit will become available to an income-eligible person, so most likely, what we find is that all these complexes, you stay at that percentage as people, because of turnover.
Okay.
So you are addressing that need.
Why is there a ten-year restriction on the owner occupied and a thirty-year on the rental units? What's the differentiator there? Why, why have you selected one term for one and another for the other?
Industry standards, the way that homeownership is done throughout the country with moderately priced dwelling units, is that homeownership is less restrictive than rental. With rental, most of these projects will also have other types of financing involved them that will actually require that they be affordable for more than thirty years, so.
Okay, now, when the owner occupied on these ones that you're purchasing, is there any prohibition on someone buying this and then turning it into a rental unit?
Yes, there is, yes.
Okay, where is that? I didn't see that in the bill.
Well, the unit must be owner occupied, so we will enforce that the unit be, stay owner occupied.
Okay, so at the moment that it's no longer owner occupied, then you're going to kick someone out of the unit?
Then we'll have to deal with that unit, because there's, there's a restricted covenant on the property.
Okay.
For ten years that says a lot of different things, and one of the things it says is it must be owner occupied.
Okay, now, after the ten years, all those restrictions are gone, and someone, again, could move out and then use this as a rental unit?
That's true.
Okay, so I guess the, the question that I would have is, I'm just trying to go to the end, when you think about people who are in business, they're always looking for what's the edge of the rule, and how do I go just a little past it? And so when I think about this, I'm concerned about what I would call a straw man transaction, where effectively you have someone who has money comes to another person who may not have quite as much, and say, you income qualify, why don't you go over and do this homeownership path, take this for ten years, we have a side deal, you and I, that I'm going to go ahead and get this unit when you're done, and then all of a sudden, at the end of ten years, that person moves out, and now you've got a very low-priced rental unit.
Sounds like fraud.
I'm like, wow, I'm impressed.
Yeah, I'm a little concerned.
I can't imagine somebody putting that much thought and effort into something like this.
I spend time thinking about these things, so.
No, hey!
I'm a little concerned about straw man arguments, so.
I'd like to see a project come forward, and I think I'd be a blessed.
I think, I, I don't think that would be legal, and I would defer to a better attorney than I, but I think that that is fraud.
Well, Mr. Swain is, is here, do you see any legal prevention in this bill as written that would cause that to be a problem?
Well, you know, it's an interesting idea, but you think about it, you're still achieving the purposes of the bill, which is to get someone in that income bracket living in that property.
Okay, for a period.
For a period of ten years.
Right.
Correct.
Right, but then after that, that person could come out.
After that, that person could sell it to whoever he wanted to sell it to.
Okay.
Whatever price.
As the term is used, homeownership unit currently in section eighteen-eleven-one-sixty-seven of the code, is that actually defined anywhere?
No, we do not define homeownership.
Okay.
We would typically defer to any dictionary, any reputable dictionary, to say, what is ownership, what is home?
You know how I feel about those dictionary definitions?
Put the two together, you got it, homeownership.
Okay, do you think it would be helpful to have a definition for homeownership unit?
If it would help someone like you wants to dot every i across every t, I think we should.
I think it's pretty apparent.
I, I just think it's obvious with the use of the dictionary.
Okay, all right.
Yes.
And again, so I guess my, my sort of final question would be, what's the rationale on taking away the setback in the height requirements from the individual districts and making them all mirror R twenty-two, even in non-residential districts? What's the thought process there for the bill? Why, why is that happening? And how does that promote a consistent application of the code?
Well, I'll defer to the experts, but it's, it's partly because these projects are extremely difficult to build, and to make the financing work, as Ms. Coke talked about, we have to, to make the incentives right. And so there, it does, there still are setback requirements, it doesn't abolish them, it just adjusts them to the R twenty-two.
And these setbacks and the height requirements that are already in the bulk regs for the individual zoning districts are going to be too problematic to make these projects work?
Do you know how many projects we have seen in the last couple, it's not very many?
Okay.
And so the idea is to create an incentive, and the way to do that is by, you know, changing those setback requirements.
Right.
So that it becomes an incentive.
And the incentive is not only in the GDP, it's also in the land use article, which seems to speak to how challenging it is for these types of units.
So what's the setback then in R twenty-two?
The setback in R twenty-two, the front is twenty, the side is twenty-five, the rear is thirty, and if it's on a corner side, it's thirty.
And what's the height restriction?
The height is forty-five feet unless you increase the setback one foot for every two feet in height.
Okay, so theoretically, you could have, in an R five zoned area, townhouses, and then all of a sudden you could have a building that's forty-five feet high right next to it?
That, that is what this would allow.
Okay.
Yes.
All right, thank you.
Councilwoman Pickard?
Hi, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Ms. Coke, could you, maybe for folks that aren't as aware, discuss how many of these communities were able to be built from the twenty-eleven? It's my understanding the twenty-eleven legislation, bringing Anarundel County a workforce housing bill, was an outgrowth of our two thousand and nine GDP. And I have about, I can count on one hand how many communities have been built, I can name them actually, but I, I just wanted to confirm.
And then those, those actually weren't built, they were built in accordance with existing zoning, but there, there hasn't been any that came through the workforce housing bill that have been, the one that was coming forward was the one on Ritchie Highway when the bill was changed.
And so we, we haven't done really well with our zoning code, but this was, the two thousand and eleven legislation was a direct outgrowth from the work of our two thousand and nine GDP.
Right, right, and I think that a good example is that we currently have on the zoning code that we allow housing for elderly of modest means, which is incentivized to get affordable housing for elderly. And when that first passed, we had a couple of projects that came through and got built, but that was at the time that the state was actually providing financing for elderly projects. They since have limited the amount of funds, they, they don't really have any funds available for elderly projects, so there hasn't been any other built. So it, it shows you that you not only need the land use incentive, but you also need the financing to make these things happen.
Well, and in my conversations with folks, both for-profit and nonprofit, that are involved in building communities, because of the financing and because of the restrictions, it's my understanding that you're not going to get any sort of concrete-framed high-rise, it's just too expensive. So these are all going to be wood-framed communities, which is going to then limit to that forty-five degree, forty-five feet in height.
Right, and we, we have not seen that in any projects that have been built.
Yeah, what would you, what, what do you think it would take to, we've, we've estimated or projected that we might get sixty units from this legislation. What would it, what, what do you think is, because originally, we, we, this, our code allowed in R two for those incentives, so sixty sounds great, and I know, I know this is your passion and, and your life's work, so sixty sounds really great, but as we are, you know, the fastest-growing industry or, or workforce in this county, while we've talked about teachers and police and fire, it's actually in retail and the service industry. So we're growing a need in the county for quality housing for that sector as well, that is where jobs are. We know we're building, we know we're building, we know we're building the four hundred thousand, five hundred thousand, six hundred thousand dollar home, we know that. So what do you think, this, how could this bill be enhanced to maybe get us a hundred and twenty units in the next five years?
Please let the panel respond.
That's a difficult question.
It was somewhat rhetorical.
It is.
But I, I'm, I'm, thank you.
I would like to, I would like to add that, you know, the administration stands ready to work with the council as we move through the GDP process, as we move through to continue to make improvements so that everybody can live and work in Anarundel County.
And I would just add that I think that, that's why I see this as such a compromise, where we, before we had talked about R two, I think this, by bringing that out and doing it R five, it's good land use, it makes good land use sense, and it also makes good economic sense.
Councilwoman Fiedler?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. We've been talking a lot about the two thousand and nine GDP and the upcoming GDP, and I think I've shared my concerns with the administration that this is coming on the cusp of the next GDP, and I've said many times that I think that, that the next GDP that this council will work on is potentially the, the most important piece of legislation that we will work on. Outside of the GDP and comprehensive zoning, one of the criterias to have a parcel rezoned is that the characteristics of the surrounding parcels no longer are consistent. By increasing the density in R five specifically, I feel that we are opening ourselves up to a domino effect of requests for increased zoning, either residentially or commercially. Have, have you all discussed that?
So I'll let the experts talk a little bit more about that, but I do, I don't believe this is a big enough domino to knock down the next one, if that makes sense, to stick to your analogy. The, the number of units that we're talking about to change the character of a neighborhood, you know, would really be difficult, we would, you know, we would have a big, we would need a lot more of these projects for that to be the case, but I defer to the experts on some of that.
And, and I would concur, I, I think what would be helpful to you is if you could actually see some of the projects that exist outside of traditional residential neighborhoods, so you can get an idea of what this potentially could look like if it were a successful workforce housing project that came forward, and I would be happy to share that information with you.
I guess, and I'm happy to look at that, I think my concern is because we're not staying within the bulk regulations of R five, that in and of itself is going to change the characteristic in R five, and I, the density potential, I know that, you know, you say there's not going to be a ton of these projects, but there, that's not written in stone, and, and I have concerns with that because my district, I've heard at the Vision Anarundel sessions, both of the ones that were in my district, density was one of the top things that I heard, so I have to really take that into consideration. Thank you.
Councilwoman Pickard?
So, one of our home ownership-focused projects, Oakwood Family Homes, is in, is in my area, and you would be hard-pressed if you drove by to notice that it was any different than any other market price community, and it is serving our working class and our disabled, and doing a beautiful job of it. It's a lovely twenty-two, single-family home community. I've, I've met one particular gentleman who is enjoying homeownership and fully disabled, and it's a really nice community, and I would encourage my colleagues to go see, because it, it doesn't look any different, and it is R five, I'm pretty certain it's an R five, but it's not townhouses, it's single-family homes, and it is putting folks on a path to homeownership.
Yeah, I just wanted to mention, there are a couple of projects that were approved as part of the housing for the elderly of moderate means, which also allows R twenty-two density. One project is located at one eighty Ritchie Highway, that's a four-point-seven acre property zone R two, approved for a hundred and three units. There's another property at six oh two Hammond's Lane in Baltimore, zoned R five, four-point-two-seven acres with ninety units. So that could kind of give you a sense of what, you know, the footprint would look like for some of these housing, workforce housing projects.
Could you repeat the first one?
One eighty Ritchie Highway, Severna Park, zone R two, four-point-seven acres. The other one, six oh two Hammond's Lane, Baltimore, zone R five. The other one, 602 Hammond's Lane, Baltimore, Zone R-5, 90 units.
Mr. Chairman.
Councilwoman Lacy.
Thank you. Ms. Rhodes, I believe you mean Brooklyn Park, when you, on the second one.
602 Hammond's Lane, well, I have Baltimore, it couldn't be Brooklyn Park, but that's the address that came up in my system.
My folks up there.
Brooklyn Park, okay.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Before we go to the public, I just want to make some clarities clear, because I've gotten also a lot of emails and some misconceptions. Mr. Barron, people talk about this going to cause overcrowding at schools. None of these units can be built if they do not meet adequate facilities, am I correct?
Correct.
Also, if there is no roads or water and sewer connected to any property, particularly rural areas, can these projects be built?
They cannot.
Okay. In addition, in talking to other ones, I think there's a group missing here, and I don't know if you want to chime in, but this is particular to my district, particular 198, the number of homeless veterans that I've run into, and Fort Meade is located in my district. I don't know if you want to chime in, we talked about police, fire, and teachers, but no one's here talked about the homeless veterans and the camps that are also in our area. So I want to discuss how this bill impacts them, because I think that's a missing group that's not been discussed here this evening.
That's, that's very true, and we definitely need to be aware of that. I'll, I know Mr. Martin and Ms. Coe do a lot of great work with a number of organizations that work for those who serve our country.
Just so you know, we have a special program right now that we're working on for rental subsidies for veterans, homeless veterans, and we have a list of every single homeless veteran that's in the county, and we're working on reducing that list, and it's getting down every single day. We're below 15 people.
And we do have a federal program that the Housing Commission receives money for veterans. It's competitive, and we've been fortunate, but the numbers are nowhere near adequate enough, and right now, we're at 22 subsidies annually for veterans. And so there's a huge need to do far better in this county with the assistance for our veterans.
Thank you. Councilwoman Fiedler.
Thank you. This is more of a statement and for the record, I had, as my colleagues did, several emails, quite a few emails today, and I don't want any of my constituents to waste any of their time addressing this. So just for clarification, when the county executive had a press release regarding these two bills, it was stated that he worked with the council, and I have some angry constituents with me. I want, for the record, for you to understand, that the first time that I saw this bill was when it was introduced last month. I did not work on this bill, so that's kind of the reason for all of the questions tonight for clarification's sake. I don't think it was intentional, but just for the record, I saw this bill when it was introduced.
We will do a better job next time.
Thank you.
Apologies.
Thank you. Okay, we're going to go to public hearing at this point, so we have the panel get up. The public hearing will allow people to come forward and speak for two minutes. I do have a list. I will call your name. We need your name and address for the record. That's a part of our council rules, so I'm going to repeat that. Your name and address as a part of the record, that's in our council rules, and two minutes. Since we have a long list of people, I just want to go over a couple of things. If you could get seated promptly as soon as possible, and also stick to your two minutes, the old-time clicker still works up here, and Madam Secretary will give you a wave if time is getting close, and hopefully you could stay within that, and please summarize and move on. I also ask to hold your applause and excitement, certainly if people want to go outside and scream, that's fine, but in here, we have to have decorum and respect for the council members and everyone here, because you're impacting their time, our time, we just want to show respect. That's really what we're here all to do, even if we have difference of opinions. So I'm going to first call the first six people, and I apologize with names, I'm going to try and read these the best of my ability. Barbara Samuels, Lorene Pacelli, Trudy McFaul, Jesse Keller, Ann Wolfe, and Laura Donovan. And you could just come forward, and in that order, state your name and address, and then the two minutes, and we can get started.
My name is Barbara Samuels. I'm the fair housing attorney for the ACLU of Maryland, and I'm pleased to be here testifying on behalf of our 1,300 members in Anarundel County. And I want to thank the administration and the cosponsors who put forward this bill. Barbara Samuels and ACLU of Maryland, 3,600 Clipper Mill Road, Baltimore, Maryland, 21211. So Anarundel County, as you've heard, is experiencing an affordable housing crisis, and the numbers that you heard actually understate the problem, they're not an exaggeration. The county has long acknowledged a large unmet need for affordable housing. The state pegs the deficit of affordable housing in the county at 21,517 units. And this is because we've got a, and I do have written testimony, I'm sorry, a mismatch between the county's growth as a major regional job center and one of the fastest-growing residential areas in the region, and the zoning. So the county's general development plan states that it's the county's goal to offer a wide variety of housing types and prices to meet the needs of the workforce and residents of all incomes. That is not happening, and one of the main reasons it's not happening, and what makes the development process so difficult, is actually the county's exclusionary zoning and land use regime. Now, the gap between incomes and housing costs is due in large part to that, to the restrictive.
Could you please summarize quickly?
Boy. The artificial restriction of land available for housing, which the county has been cited in their analysis of impediments to fair housing.
Thank you.
As violating federal law.
Lorene.
Is this on?
Name and address, thank you.
Yes. Trudy McFaul, 205 Scott Drive, Annapolis, Maryland. I'm chairman of Homes for America, which is a nonprofit affordable housing development organization headquartered here in Annapolis, and I had the privilege to serve as chairman of the Pittman Transition Team Subcommittee on Affordable Housing. So this is an exciting night for us, because these recommendations were included in that, and I thank very much the sponsors, including my own council member, for bringing this forward. Actually, I'm going to shift my comments, oh my goodness, just a second to say, we don't have to, we know the data on needs, but we all know perfectly well that all of us have sons and daughters and workers who can't live in Anarundel County, and we shouldn't be proud of that. We have lagged as a county. We, if we're not at the bottom of the suburban metropolitan councils in terms of the tightness of the land use, the, the lack of incentives that we offer for affordable housing, we got to be pretty near to the bottom. I want to be registered that I'm the one who thinks you got it just right tonight, because this does do, makes progress. It is not a big, huge wave that's significant, that's going to produce hundreds of units next year, because this funding comes from the state of Maryland to produce this rental housing, and the reality is, they have, you think you have restrictions, they have restrictions, on top of restrictions, these, these communities have to be built in very smart-growth urban areas. They're not, they simply are not allowed, and the competition is extreme, and that's why we get to 60 units a year. This is not going, if Anarundel County can't do this much to diversify our housing, shame on us, because this is not a big deal. This is a few more areas where we would be allowed to do affordable housing, and a few more incentives to make them financially viable, and the city of Annapolis has sent you a letter supporting this as well.
Lucine or Lorene? I don't know. L-U-R or L-U-C-I-N-E Paisley? Was there somebody? Okay. Sorry, I just want to go in order to give everybody their time and to be heard, so.
Thank you. Lucy and Paisley, I'm the legal director at Disability Rights Maryland, we're the protection and advocacy center for persons with disabilities for the state of Maryland. And I just wanted to highlight tonight the severe housing needs for Anarundel County residents who have disabilities, many of whom work and can, could afford to live in this housing, or, and are not, currently not able to. And there's many people in your county who are stuck in nursing homes and assisted living centers because they can't find an appropriate place to live, and that brings up the other issue I wanted to mention tonight, which is the need for accessibility. And if we are going to incentivize the creation of housing, there should be a premium put on creating housing that meets people's needs and assisting people throughout the lifespan that can benefit from housing that is physically accessible for wheelchair users.
Thank you. Can you get your address, I, we can get that for the record, please?
Sure. I'm Disability Rights Maryland, 1500 Union Avenue, Suite 2000, Baltimore, 21211.
Thank you, appreciate your testimony. Ms. Jesse Keller, name and address, please. Thank you, two minutes.
Hello, Jesse Keller. I'm representing Maryland Multi-Housing Association, 11155 Dulfield Boulevard, Owings Mills, Maryland. We are a professional trade association, and our members manage and own apartment communities throughout the state of Maryland. We house over 535,000 residents and manage over 27,500 apartments in Anarundel County. Anarundel County currently doesn't have enough affordable housing to meet the needs of its families and individuals, including those who already live and work here. These individuals include our first responders, teachers, caregivers, and correctional officers, just to name a few. According to a 2019 publication by the National Low Income Housing Coalition, a family would need to earn over $53,000 annually to afford to rent a two-bedroom dwelling here in Anarundel. We know that many county residents don't make this much money, and as a result, have no choice but to be rent and mortgage burdened. Rent and mortgage overburdened households that pay a high percentage of their income to housing expenses are thus forced into precarious situations. They can become unstable and face homelessness due to a first-time crisis, a job loss, or health issues. Council Bill 5419 is a step in the right direction to address Anarundel County's housing affordability crisis and protect both its most vulnerable and vital populations that struggle to afford to live here. For the foregoing reasons, MMHA respectfully requested the council vote in favor of this bill. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Keller. Ms. Wolfe.
Ann Wolfe, 5931 Tyler Road, Deal, Maryland. I'm representing myself tonight, although I'm a member of several organizations. I'm excited the county, in the county council and executive are addressing this serious problem to provide affordable workforce in Anarundel County. I am also concerned that this complex bill is being rushed without community participation. Here are my areas of concern. Transparency and communication. No public meetings or community outreach have been scheduled before this evening, so a lot of people, including some here, did not know about it. I would like an explanation of why the bill is being rushed through the county council when we are going into July and a long summer. Studies and resources. We need a detailed fiscal impact analysis, a comprehensive environmental impact review that addresses current and future development, a detailed analysis of transportation issues to plan and handle increased traffic, a review of current underused or vacant building, shopping centers, et cetera, and a review of best practices from counties that have dressed working for, have addressed workforce housing issues and developed performance standards. Transportation. Analysis of available and planned public transportation and a study of alternative methods of transportation. Environment. The effects of upzoning to 22 for stormwater runoff, increased impervious surfaces, and extensive destruction of trees that filter, that filter stormwater. Please consult and communicate with all of us and the experts who have implemented such workforce housing successfully before passing this bill.
Thank you, Ms. Wolfe. Ms. Donovan, Laura Donovan. Name and address in two minutes.
Laura Donovan, 114 Glendale Avenue, Glenburne, Maryland, 21061. I can't give you facts and figures, I'm very unprepared. I just got to read this a half an hour before we came in the door here. I'm concerned about the building. I understand Mr. Pittman was elected primarily because he said he wanted to do something about all the building. It's a good cause, which you all have, and I think it's necessary, but just, for example, I moved onto a dead-end street, 1970, not far from the airport, where they had single propeller planes. Now, I've got mega jets. It's very noisy, it's very dirty. Our schools are now overcrowded because the building has gotten out of hand, our roads are overcrowded because it's gotten out of hand, as this woman was just speaking a minute ago. I really hope this gets looked into better. There may be more people who might have wanted to be here tonight, but it's 4th of July, we're coming up, so they're on vacation. I'm a little confused about the discriminatory things, if I'm on the, this is workforce, okay.
That's the next bill, ma'am.
That's the next one, okay, but the construction, the tax money, that's pretty much where I'm at with this. I just had my taxes raised, and my quality of life's been going down over there since My life's just getting taken away from me. We lived almost country when I moved in there, and now I'm almost city. So, and that's pretty much all I've got to say on this right now. Slow down, think about it, get your facts straight. Please slow down on crowding things into things. 22 units per acre, that sounds a little steep. We're going to need wider roads, we're going to need more schools. It's like a dog chasing its tail, almost. We need housing for the firefighters. Our fire station just got closed. You get more people in, you need more firefighters, you need more houses.
Thank you, Ms. Donovan.
I'm confused.
Thank you. This panel is dismissed.
Thank you.
We will go along to the next six members, and again, as I call your name, please come forward, name and address in two minutes. Ms. Ellen Moss, Ms. Gary, Mr. Gary Muller, Councilman Grosso, John Grosso, Ivy Dench Carter, Jenny Zito, Ms. Jenny Zito, and Mr. Bill Carlson. And Ms. Moss, whenever you're ready, name and address in two minutes.
Ellen Moss, PO Box 824, Jessup, Maryland, 20794. A lot of my questions were addressed tonight, not that they were answered sufficiently, but they were addressed. I did have one comment to make about the special exception and why that seems to be a good idea to delete that in this bill, and I appreciate Ms. Rhodes saying that it goes to a community meeting, but I've been to many of these community meetings, and the decisions by the developer are already made, and the comments by the people at these public meetings are on deaf ears. If you had a special exception and a hearing for that, at least people get to put their testimony on the legal record. So I don't see where that's a problem. Changing the zoning to allow R-22 in an R-5 or R-10 in some of these districts, it just seems that no matter what you say, it's going to change the character of the community. This is what happens, that's the reality of what happens. And I'm just trying to protect, when I moved to Anarundel County, and I did my research, and I built, I moved into a house where I could afford, and I'm trying to protect my little nest from becoming something different with the hard-earned money that I saved for all my life.
Thank you, Ms. Moss. Mr. Gary Muller.
Good evening, my name is Gary Muller, I'm also from Jessup, 7571 Wiggly Avenue. Some of the statements that were made by the county employers were very naive, and it's not how things work in real-life practice. We've been through multiple hearings, multiple appeals, and the things, just, it just, that just doesn't happen. This bill, I think, is well-intentioned, but I think you have to look at the whole system of what's going to be involved, the funding. And I'd be, quite frankly, it'd be interesting to see whether you all would commit to the amount of funding to cover the resources that would be needed in this county to support that kind of increased density. We've got, as was just stated, the schools, the roads, the West County, it's gridlocked. I don't know that you can fix the traffic. We already have very high density being developed right in Jessup today. So, you know, you also, I think the thing that bothers me is that you've got a county executive appointing a community, a citizen advisory committee, which is looking into these things, trying to look at the big picture, the big system approach to this thing, meeting with all these different agencies or offices, and now you introduce this here kind of a, it's a big deal. I mean, going from a R-5 to R-22, the impact on schools, which are always behind these different agencies or offices, and now you introduce this here kind of a, it's a big deal. I mean, going from an R-5 to R-22, the impact on schools, which are always behind a curve. It's always the model that they use to estimate those numbers has always been wrong. Been doing this stuff 30-some years. The road capacity, it's always been wrong. You don't believe me, come look at 175 in Jessup, the Parkway, 295, the 95, 170. It's bad. And this here is just, it's too quick. You need to step back and think about it and work with the CAC.
Thank you, Mr. Muller.
Put it on their agenda.
Thank you so much. Councilman Grasso?
Chairman, I'm one of those people who want to go outside and scream. I gotta tell you that right now. The issue, I think we as a society have lost the concept that if you want to get something in life, you work for it. And if you still can't get it, you work a little bit harder. And the stigma that this population seems to have is that they think they work 40 hours a week, that they've actually done something. My problem here is that people move to Anarundel County because of what it is. They don't live in Baltimore City. But now what we're trying to do is turn Anarundel County into Baltimore City. So we sugarcoat things and we call workforce housing, when really what it's called is low-income housing. We try to turn around and cover it with our first responders, with our police, we're helping our teachers. We're using all these things to make the feel-good stuff. But I'm gonna give everyone in this crowd a real good test here. I want you to get in your car and I want you to go to Pioneer City or the Orchards. There you go. There's plenty of houses back there to buy for $70,000. Why don't you go move back there? You won't move back there because it's nothing but crime. And that's exactly what this kind of stuff will bring to Anarundel County. Go back there, I got a house for sale at 1944 Awwell Court that I'll sell you for $72,000. There's your house. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Please keep the comments to yourself, let everyone testify. Mr. Ivy Dench Carter?
Address is 575 South Charles Street, Baltimore, Maryland 21210. I have a comment typed up here, but I need to address Mr. Grasso's comments.
Only if I can address her back.
Ms. Grasso, she has the floor.
First of all, this is not welfare housing. This is housing for families regardless if they work for 20 hours a week or 40 hours a week. They deserve affordable, safe, decent housing like every other citizen of Anarundel County and the United States of America. We also have to take care of our elderly people, we have to take care of our disabled, those with challenges. We have a number of people that need to be taken care of. Affordable housing does not bring crime. It does not bring crime. I've developed too many affordable housing developments in my 28-year career who have, I've had police chiefs come to me and say, "Before you came and redeveloped this community, I was here three, four times a day. Now I'm never here." Well, "never" is an exaggeration, but the calls to the police department regarding crime are less. It does not reduce property values. That is a misnomer. It is not all Section 8 housing. And just so you know, people qualify for Section 8 who make 80% of area median income. Okay, so let's just forget the misnomer about it's all about people on welfare. It is not. It's for our citizens who work every day, who have children, who deserve to have this type of housing. Lastly, the financing for these types of projects are extremely difficult and you have to develop 60 units to make it financeable.
Thank you.
Through the state and through the county.
Thank you so much. Ms. Zito, Jenny Zito?
Jenny Zito? Jenny Zito, 760 Stacy Oakway, Millersville, Maryland 21108. I'm one of the huddle leaders for WISE, which is a group of 700 women in Anarundel County, most of us mothers. I'm a mother of three. My children went through Shipley's Elementary and Severna Park Middle and High School. And we would have loved to have a more diverse economic group at our school. That would have been really nice. It would have enriched my children growing up. It would have felt like a more fair and just thing to have. And we're particularly concerned about things like the teachers and the other employees of the schools, the firemen. These people deserve to be able to be in the same communities as the population that they serve, and we would have loved to have them there. I really am proud of what the council has been doing, their work, the fact that you guys passed this amazing budget in which you're expanding support for teachers and firemen and doing the right thing for this county. And I think you deserve to be proud for what you're doing, and I'm very glad that there's this movement toward fair and affordable housing.
Thank you, Mr. Carlson.
Bill Carlson, 760 Stacy Oakway, Millersville, Maryland. I'm representing myself tonight. I came to this meeting to support the bill, to help with this clear problem of affordable housing, but it surprised me what I learned tonight, that first of all, the opposition that seems very strident, given the sort of small amount of housing that's likely to result from this, and the fact that the council seems to, that it's gonna get a chance to approve these items because of the required financing that was discussed earlier. I see this bill as a good compromise between those that want to control growth and those that want to help housing those of lower income. I hope it can pass. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Carlson. This panel is now dismissed. We'll move along to the next group. As I call your name forward, name and address in two minutes. Mr. Douglas Nichols, Mr. Michael Robinson, Mr. Stephen Wadi, Mr. Edward Willard, Mr. Carl Snowden, and Mr. Tim Stern. As folks are coming up, for the sake of time, Mr. Nichols, name and address in two minutes.
Am I on?
Yes, sir.
Douglas Nichols, I live at 506 Enclave Trail, Severna Park, Maryland. First of all, I want to thank the council for allowing us to give you our two minutes of thoughts on the bill. I have a written testimony here that I'm really not gonna follow. I'm gonna take my two minutes and express to you all that initially, I was a member of the Community Advisory Committee that was formed under the previous county executive. I was removed from the CAC by the new county exec, and I don't think it was because I'm a developer. I'm a retired resident of Anarundel County. I've lived here for 64 years. But as a member of the CAC, while I was there, I completely got involved with why they were formed, not the CAC, but also the planning and zoning for GDP 2040. What I don't understand is why the council is going out of the process for the rezoning that's already well underway. Hours have been spent on it, thousands of hours. Money's been spent. The county exec had a kickoff meeting for the CAC a couple months ago, even brought in former Governor Paris Glenn Dunning. And he has all kinds of thoughts about rapid transit and high-density housing. I just think that you all should be leaving it to the planning and zoning office to do what's right. They take the input from transportation, they take the input from water and wastewater. They also listen to...
Mr. Nichols, please stop.
Let me finish the sentence.
Yep.
I'm done.
Absolutely. Thank you.
They also take input from the Anarundel County Public School System and their planning and trends for what's happening. I don't see that you all are doing that. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Michael Robinson?
Hi, I'm Michael Robinson, 1040 Sun Valley Drive in Cape St. Clair on the Broadneck Peninsula. I'm here as a private resident. And the area where I live right now, I've been living there since 2002, we've seen a lot of development over the years, and a lot of the residents are consistently protesting further development on the peninsula because of traffic and population. They're all legitimate complaints. The quality of living is good, but it is a struggle at times because of the traffic on 50 to go over the bridge during the summer, Sandy Point State Park, et cetera. There's a lot of things that affect the peninsula as far as congestion. So based on what I've heard so far, I'm sort of new to this bill. Different pieces of College Parkway, Route 2, may fit the requirements for some of this building. And if it does so, it would impact the peninsula quite a bit as far as traffic and quality of life. So I'm here stating that fact, and I'm concerned that perhaps this bill does not seem to address local impact. I haven't heard a lot of, because it's such a diverse county, there's density concerns, a lot of it having to do with the waterways and congestion as far as getting in and around the community. So I'd like to learn more about that and if there is gonna be an impact in my area. That's all. Thanks.
Thank you. Stephen Wadi?
Good evening. My name's Stephen Wadi. I'm at 7968 Heather Miss Drive in Severn, Maryland 21144. I have written testimony, I'm here on behalf of the NAACP as well. The majority of our written testimony focuses on 5519, but the Anarundel County NAACP supports Bill 5419 and recognizes the need for more workforce housing. This bill will help cashiers, construction workers, teachers, warehouse workers, families, and many young people who have an urgent need for affordable housing. Although the bill is modest, it is a step in the right direction for increasing housing options in the county. Today's African-American workforce in Baltimore region is concentrated in lower-wage industries and occupations, and African-American workers tend to earn less than their white counterparts. Since African-Americans are generally overrepresented in low-skilled occupations, they are susceptible to being the last hired and the first fired. Consequently, many are priced out of housing in Anarundel County due to their low wages and constant turnover. According to the National Low Income Housing Coalition, the hourly wage necessary to afford a two-bedroom rental at fair market rent in Anarundel County is $25.81. That type of wage is generally out of reach, especially with wage stagnation going on. And despite the protestations of some others, there has been a rise in unemployment amongst black women recently. In addition, so finally, the housing is generally out of reach for anyone making minimum wage in Maryland. So the NAACP supports all efforts to improve housing for residents of this county. Urged passage.
Thank you. Mr. Edward Willard?
I'm Edward Willard. I'll be speaking for Edward Willard. 1226 Plateau Place, Annapolis 21409. Good evening. I'm Edward Willard, policy analyst for the ARC Maryland. National and state data confirm that low-income people with disabilities are experiencing severe housing affordability problems. It is virtually impossible for people with disabilities receiving supplemental security income or SSI to obtain affordable and accessible housing in the community unless they receive rental housing assistance. People with disabilities are unfortunately among our poorest citizens. Many people with significant disabilities rely on SSI to cover their living expenses. The very intent of SSI is to assist with the cost of food, clothing, and shelter. This bill would provide protections so that people with disabilities are not denied access to housing because this is their source of income. According to a report by the Consortium for Citizens with Disabilities, a national coalition, access to decent and safe and affordable housing has fostered greater inclusion in the community for people with disabilities and has increased their access to natural support, such as families, friends, and coworkers, as well as social and recreational opportunities routinely enjoyed by all Americans. This is certainly the case in Anarundel County. Being a person with a disability, I have experienced housing discrimination based on my disability. I can say, being discriminated against, living in a house I own and choose to live in in a certain neighborhood, I felt devalued and humiliated. This legislation would not establish an undue burden on landlords. In fact, several Maryland counties have already implemented laws prohibiting housing discrimination based on source of income, thereby demonstrating that this fair-minded protection can be implemented. As a progressive county, the ARC Maryland believes the Anarundel County Council should pass this bill and join these other jurisdictions in ensuring fair access to housing while reasonably protecting landlords.
Thank you. Mr. Snowden?
Mr. Chairman, members of the county council, first, thank you very much for the opportunity to speak. I want to thank the more than 200 people who have gathered here on this occasion to speak. Elections have a consequence, and one of the things I am just delighted to observe tonight, that this county council, unlike a previous county council, really is simple. You allow people to have their point of view. I have not heard any bigotry coming from the members of the county council. That was not always the case. When the voters voted, they voted for change. They voted for a new day. And I want to thank County Executive Pittman for following the wishes of voters. When he was campaigning and when members of the county council were campaigning, they made it very clear that affordable housing was needed in this county. It's easy to divide people, it's easy to use language to divide. Frankly, bigotry used to pay politically. People could make and win elections. In 2018, it was demonstrated clearly by the voters. They want people to lead, to solve problems. They don't want people to use bombastic language to try to exploit differences between people. So I just want to pause long enough to thank each member of the county council, particularly the 5th district. I'm just so delighted that you're there because you bring a different point of view. You bring a refreshing point of view, where you can differ with people, but you don't have to be bombastic. Thank you very much.
Ms. Stone, can you just get your address for the record?
It's 230 Garden Gate Lane, and I'm representing the Caucus of African-American Leaders. Thank you.
Thank you.
Annapolis.
Mr. Stern?
Hi, I'm Tim Stern. I'm the pastor of Arkandub Presbyterian Church in Odenton, 8424 Pine Wood Tree Parkway, Odenton. And I'm also the co-chair of ACT, Anarundel Connecting Together. ACT is a nonpartisan organization of 27 member and friend organizations that works for fairness and solutions to immediate and long-term problems in our county. We are black, brown, white, we are Muslim, Jew, Christian, Unitarian. We build power and form our actions based on one-on-one relational meetings, based on listening sessions that we do, and based on door-knocking campaigns. To date, we have heard the voices of over 5,000 Anarundel County citizens. I'm here tonight to speak in favor of Housing Bill 5419, and I'm joined by a small group of ACT friends who are gonna stand but not say a thing and then sit down. We're here tonight because of the inequities in housing in our county and because those inequities are near a crisis level. The poor struggle mightily, and people who are employed cannot afford to buy or rent homes in our community. I have a son and I have a daughter that have moved to Denton because they wanted to be able to buy a home and they couldn't afford to live in Anarundel County. 5419 gets us there. Thank you to the council members who introduced this and began this discussion. We asked many of you at our launch in front of over 1,300 people if you would work with us for safe and affordable housing. You said yes, and in 5419, we have a path forward. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Stern. This panel is now dismissed, and we will move forward to the next group. Ms. Jill Thompson, Mr. Mike Drummond, Mr. Chris Ronk, Ms. Holly Slack, Ms. Amy Leahy, and Ms. Lynn Rockenbach. Again, if you'd all come forward, name and address in two minutes. Ms. Thompson's first, so whenever you're ready, name and address in two minutes.
Hi, my name's Jill Thompson, and my address is 881 Chinkapin Crest Drive, Harwood, Maryland. I'm actually here representing the Lighthouse Homeless Shelter, but we're a proud member of ACT as well. And I just want to point out that we're very proud to serve many, many veterans experiencing homelessness. I've been an advocate at the Lighthouse for about five years, and we're just thrilled to be here tonight. And I'm very privileged to be speaking on behalf of... And I'm very privileged to be speaking on behalf of thousands of Anarond County residents that we serve every day, 365 days a year. We are so thankful to everyone who's worked hard on this bill. Affordable workforce housing is desperately needed in Anarond County, especially for those experiencing homelessness and housing instability. If you've ever stopped by the Lighthouse to serve lunch or volunteer your time, you may have noticed people coming and going all day and all night. You may have seen Veronica rushing out to her second job, or William racing to catch the bus to pick up an extra shift at work, or Daryl sleepily heading off to yet another overnight shift after having worked all day. By and large, the majority of the people experiencing homelessness at the Lighthouse are employed. They are working full-time. They're often holding down second and third jobs. They are not experiencing homelessness because they're not working. They're experiencing homelessness because there's a lack of affordable housing in Anarond County. Like Roberta, single mother of five, proudly employed as a full-time teacher with Anarond County Public School System. Despite working tirelessly for months to pull her family out of homelessness, she was unable to find affordable housing anywhere in Anarond County, as now in West Baltimore, where she is very far from her job, all of her support systems, and where her kids can't safely go out to play. If our county can create and support workforce housing, we can prevent families like Roberta's from experiencing homelessness and displacement. Thanks for being here tonight and supporting the need for affordable workforce housing.
Thank you. Mr. Mike Drummond, last call. Is Mr. Drummond in the audience? I want to make sure I give everybody a chance. Mr. Drummond, all right, moving on. Chris Ronk?
Good evening, Chris Ronk, 851 Buckingham Cove Road, Severna Park. Thank you, members of the Anarond Council, for the opportunity to speak about Proposal Someone claimed earlier that this type of housing would only happen in an urban area. That's not true. We in Severna Park were treated to an up-close and personal view of how this type of housing is really developed. The one proposed project cited just happened to be on Ritchie Highway. In the heart of our residential community, it is calling for four multi-story apartment buildings, which would have abutted directly on single-family homes on two sides. On the third side, it was across the narrow local street from single-family homes. But the fact that it was on Ritchie Highway on one side made the planners and advocates think it was perfect. It was not. It would have damaged the neighborhood by jamming multiple tall apartment buildings into their midst. While I commend the council for its interest in helping solve a problem with the shortage of affordable housing, this hasty proposal is not a good solution for our county. Lacking affordable housing is a problem nationwide. It will not be corrected with a quick fix. The council needs to work with the Greater Severna Park Council, the Arnold Preservation Council, the Broad Net Council of Communities, and the Growth Action Network. These civic groups all currently oppose 5419. This sweeping proposal of potentially changing all our five zoned properties on collector roads to be available for R-22 density countywide would have devastating long-term effects on the homeowners throughout the region. Thank you.
Thank you for your testimony. Holly Slack, Ms. Holly Slack?
Hi, I'm Holly Slack, 438 Bendale Drive, Severna Park, Maryland. I wish legislation was unanimous. You talked about the broken politics of DC and how that's not happening, but isn't it? Ms. Fiedler just talked about how there was a press release that said the county executive worked with everyone. But I guess that wasn't true. I'm so tired of this back and forth. You're going to have another 8214. You'll pass 5519, or 5419, 8214, 55. I mean, it's just, it's never-ending. Why can't you work together? I don't understand. You're all incredibly intelligent people, voted on by all of us. Please, I just, I can't watch this. I can't watch this vote. I can't watch these partisan politics. It's, I mean, it's built on a house of cards. You say it meets the requirements, but the requirements don't go far enough right now. School capacity is at its limit, but it's not closed. How come some of these schools aren't closed? I don't understand it. These critical areas that you say are okay, they're not. All these things that you say meet requirements are not good enough. Please, rework this legislation with all of you. I want a unanimous vote. I don't care how, I know you can do it. Please, let's get some unanimity. Please.
Thank you, Ms. Leahy.
Hi, Amy Leahy. I live at 712 Monmouth Avenue in Severna Park. I am the Vice President for Public Affairs for Greater Severna Park Council, and we took a vote to not support this bill. And our reasons are, and I'll just read down here, over a year ago, the council passed Bill 1718, which established a temporary moratorium on administrative zoning reclassifications, while the county executive and the Office of Planning and Zoning are engaged in reviewing and drafting the General Development Plan and the Comprehensive Resoning in 2020. I and 21 other volunteer citizens are currently attending meetings as part of the Citizens' Advisory Committee, as well as the visiting sessions we attended, which have just concluded at great cost of our time and dedication to the process. There has been no mention of rezoning specifically for workforce housing as part of this exercise. GSPC is of the opinion that this bill would and should be part of the comprehensive rezoning that is required by law to be done every eight to 10 years. Further, allowing the development of workforce housing in expanded zoning districts, subject to the R-22 Residential District bulk regulations concerning density, area coverage, setback in height, presents numerous difficulties when considering other goals of the General Development Plan and the Small Area Plans, which the county executive has said he wants to see actually part of the General Development Plan. So, this totally does away with any small-area planning that any of our communities are going to be working on. Further, so these are some concerns that we have. Fast-tracking of the bill, and there's no adequate public notice. Neighborhood character will be totally changed. Traffic in proximity to public transportation, shopping, employment opportunities, which will arise, especially in R-5, which by definition is contrary to the availability of these required amenities. Ultimately, this change in neighborhood would provide a rationale for upzoning surrounding properties, which Ms. Fiedler already addressed. The use of the collector roads is not feasible to handle the traffic impact.
Thank you.
So the devil's in the details.
Thank you, Ms. Leahy.
The details suck on this.
Lynn Rockenbach?
Hi, I'm Lynn Rockenbach, 429 Severn Site Drive, Severna Park, 21146. I think I have to follow up on that with the fast-tracking and public notice part. Definitely, there should have been more time for discussion with residents on this bill. I just heard about it about a week ago, I guess, and I went through the bill line by line, trying to figure out what it was saying. I'm going to skip the parts that I kind of agree with. They were okay. I see no need to add workforce housing as a conditional use for R-5, particularly if you're not even going to have it as a permitted use for R-22. I don't know if that's a mistake, or an accident, or what, but it looks like, for some reason, R-22 is not even a conditional use for this workforce housing, which doesn't make sense to me. R-5 seems a bit much to go from R-5 to 22. All the rest of the conditional use things, I had no problem with. Then when I got down to the conditional use definition, most things were okay, but item four, being an environmentalist and a recent past president of Severn River Association, caught my eye. Why are we raising the impervious surface allowed to 65%? Over 45% for R-22, 15, 10? Whatever. It didn't make sense. Our rivers are already impaired. We don't need more impervious surface. To me, this is a quality-of-life issue. Don't workforce housing, people need...
Thank you. Thank you. Did you want to finish your sentence?
Need relief from asphalt and concrete.
Thank you. Appreciate it for this panel. Thank you so much. We're going to go on to the next group. As you come forward, again, name and address. In two minutes, Lisa Bender, Paul Christensen, David Bishop, Mr. David Dole, Mr. Brooks Shandelmeyer, and Delegate Shanika Henson. Ms. Bender, if you're ready, name, address, two minutes. I know we're still waiting for some folks, but let's keep the truck rolling.
My name is Lisa Bender. I live at 712 Shore Road in Severna Park. I know sometimes you hear Severna Park, and you think, high income. I bought my house for $45,000. What, 25 years ago? But it was affordable. It's small, but that's all I need. I am active in several, I've lived in this area my entire life. I'm active in several community and environmental organizations. This bill is very concerning to me, not because it involves workforce housing, but because it allows for high-density development with little restrictions, conditions, and restraints in our residential communities. This bill allows high-rise and high-density complexes of R-22 in R-5 zoning, with little or no community input, notices, or considerations. This bill could allow for possible massive clearings of land, increasing the impermeable surface and runoffs that could threaten our already fragile ecosystems and waterways. Allowing R-22 in R-5 or R-10 communities without greater study could also stress already threatened, strained roadways, traffic congestion, and crowded schools. This bill would apply countywide. There are areas that could easily accommodate R-22. However, there are also areas where putting R-22 into R-5 could be detrimental. This bill does not seem to offer much protection for our existing communities and the environment. I don't understand how being allowed to put R-22 in an R-5 community is not a rezoning or a spot zoning. Realistically, developers could ask for and possibly receive additional modifications and variances to make R-22 in R-5 even easier to obtain. This bill allows for zoning changes to be in the hands of developers that could use the workforce designation...
Thank you.
... to build at will.
Thank you.
I just urge you to add more, greater consideration of the implications and consequences of this bill.
Thank you. Mr. Paul Christensen?
My name is Paul Christensen. I live at 231 Hidden Valley Road in Tracy's Landing. I'm passing forward copies of the map tonight, and I'm trying to make the point with this that all the residential areas that we're talking about here are basically zoned R-5, probably greater than 90, 95%. So we're talking about changing R-5 to R-22 to make room for workforce housing, for that application. Now, we have to think about who lives in R-5. And if you look at the images that you see, you find that these are basically small, single-family homes that occupy all of these areas. And then if we think about workforce housing, that's got to be, from an economic standpoint, it really needs to be large multifamily structures. So this bill is really aimed at plopping down large multifamily structures into R-5, small collections of single-family housing. Now that's got to really change the neighborhood. I don't think anybody, you've heard it here tonight several times, and that's got to happen. And it's also got to have an impact on property values. I don't care who lives in that house. It could be a Fortune 500 executives. But that big home, that big multifamily home next to all these small, single-family structures are going to have an impact on property values, and these poor folks that are living nearby are going to be paying for this, even though we haven't given them any opportunity to really have an effective objection to it. The special exception is gone. So here we are. It's not right. It really isn't right. And I think we have here an administration and a council that's emphasized transparency, putting communities first, and listening to the vision of local residents. This is inconsistent with that.
Thank you. Mr. David Bishop?
Thank you. David A. Bishop, 811 Magavista Road, Arnold. You may know that I broke the record for third-party votes during midterm election in our congressional district. Most of those votes come from Anarond County's side of the district. The attention and support I receive as a little third-party, average-income citizen should be an indicator that if I ever decide to run for office as a majority-party candidate, I can win, and I might even have a shot as Libertarian for a local office. That said, I believe this bill is being rushed, and parts of it contradict the exact reason some of you are sitting here today. This county voted against our previous administration due to the overcrowding and developer cronyism. We simply don't want overpopulation here. We do want a diverse and productive population in our county where housing is more affordable, but we demand a clean environment to raise our families around. We demand that our property values are not decimated by saturating the housing market. These are difficult problems to overcome. I'd like to see a revitalization solution that focuses on specific properties instead of a broad stroke across the county. This bill allows the upzone condition along collector roads. For those here who don't know, collector roads include Shore Acres Road, which already has an existing apartment complex, North Shore Road in Pasadena, Green Holly Road in Cape Sinclair, Anarond Beach Road in Severna Park, Sunrise Beach Road in Crownsville, the Main Circle in Crofton, St. Stevens Church Road in Gamberles, and my own road, Magavista in Arnold, and many other backroads which are already congested for over half the year. The U.S. rate production rate is almost at equilibrium at 2.2 children per parent couple. We do not need to force more people in smaller areas when the overall U.S. population is not growing. This implies an effort to use imported residents as workforce commodity instead of respecting individual citizens. This looks like a bill to continue allowing developers to buy properties for less and make profit, disguised as an affordable housing bill. My suggested alternative is that the conditional use be reverted from R-5 and R-10 zones back to special exception, and that this use be limited to minor arterial roads at most, while not permitted on parkways. If we are upzoning any densities, we should be downzoning areas of equal size or inducing density in other areas. I urge you to find a solution that protects our environment and represents the residents as individual and respects their personal property rights. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. David Dole?
I'm David Dole, 534 Heavy Tree Hill, Severna Park, Maryland. When I attended the budget town hall meeting at Severna Park High School, I spoke to Mr. Pittman about the priorities that the county should have, was transportation, emergency services, education, and a clean and healthy environment. And I was thankful that he managed to stop by afterwards and tell me that he agreed with me. I understand that these are actually problems that we're facing right now. They're not problems that we're looking at down the road if SR22 happens. So I don't understand why we're not addressing that first, because we're not going to have a healthy environment, we're not going to have safe transportation, we're not going to have a reduction in students in our classrooms. Second of all, I do agree with the lady from the ACLU, the problem is that there are artificial restrictions on the zoning. Instead of relaxing the zoning rights, we're talking about more government. So we have a problem created by the government, and the solution is going to be more government. It's going to be mandates from the government to say that this is what you have to do. Now, we talked earlier about the Statue of Liberty and the quote there, "These people were fleeing from countries where the kings said, 'This is our land, and you may do what we tell you to do on it.'" I thought in America, you could do whatever you want to be a property. Last, I want to make a personal note. In my childhood and my adult life, I've lived at or near the poverty rate, and I currently make $31,000 a year as an employee of the county. This bill would not have helped my single mother. This bill would not have helped me in the past, and this bill will not help me tomorrow.
Thank you. Mr. Brooks Shandelmeyer?
Waiting for me to get the clock. Thank you, Mr. Chairman and members of the council. For the record, my name is Brooks Shandelmeyer. I live on 40 Ironstone Court in Annapolis, Maryland. I am here to testify in support of this bill. This is obviously a very contentious issue. We have a lot of people who have brought forward some complaints that some are legitimate, some I think are misunderstood, but they're genuine. We have others bringing forward complaints motivated through being grifting slum lords, but at the end of the day, we have an affordable housing problem here. Our police, our teachers, our firefighters can't afford to live here in the numbers that we need. I've met with teachers' union representatives, firefighters' union representatives, police union representatives, and this is a priority for all of them, to make sure that their employees can work in, or can live in the community where they work. And vote... And voting against this bill will continue the trend of pushing out our public servants and pushing out our public safety professionals. Thank you.
Thank you. Delegate Shanika Henson?
Thank you, Mr. Chair and distinguished members of our county council. If we could count on the private market to handle this problem, then we all wouldn't be here today. The hard job of being legislators and being in government is doing what's right for the people that you serve. There will always be reasons why you shouldn't do something, but on this one, there are many more reasons why you should. When I was on the Annapolis City Council, I chaired the Housing and Human Welfare Committee. I got the opportunity to knock on doors of people who lived in our public housing and affordable housing. What I came to understand is that many of them—most of them that I met, they worked the same 40 hours a week that I did, that you do, but it's just that they got something different on the bottom line of their paycheck. The opportunities that I had to be your delegate were not given to people who were not paid fair wages, who were not given access to fair and decent housing. This is the right thing to do. On behalf of every person whose door I knock, I would welcome you all to get to know people in the neighborhoods I represented, to get to know the people who you might cast a vote against tonight before you make a decision that could greatly impact not only the quality of their lives, but their children's lives and future generations. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. This panel is dismissed. Thank you all for testifying. I only have one other person signed up, and then we'll open it up to those that have not testified. Mr. Tori Snow was the last signee that I had. And as Mr. Snow is coming up, once he gives his name and address in two minutes, again, I will open it up to others. If we can hold—Madam Secretary, do we wanna hold for everybody else? So, I—we move on, or do you wanna have people come forward? Okay. Mr. Snow, you have the floor, sir.
Good evening. Tori Snow, 1307 Beltrame Court, Odenton, Maryland. The subject of workforce housing is a matter that is extremely personal to me based on my own experience. And I just have to say that Councilwoman Rodvian actually influenced my testimony because my stance on this legislation puts me at odds with many people that may agree with me politically. I do see that we have a dramatic issue with workforce housing here in Anaronda County. I do believe that we should possibly work at discussing the issue a lot more thoroughly so that perhaps people that have different philosophical ideas—as I do sometimes—can come to some sort of agreement. Again, I was under the impression that there had been a lot of collaboration and discussion, and I was extremely disappointed to find that Ms. Fiedler was not included in that discussion. And so, I would like to be part of the solution there. You know, I do represent a strong conservative view, and I do believe that this is not a partisan issue. This is an issue that we all want to impact. And if we are given the opportunity and given a good voice and able to voice our opinions with an open mind, I do believe we can come to a reasonable solution. That's all.
Thank you, Mr. Snow. I believe Mr. Katz, and then we work our way down. Madam Secretary, do they all sign in? Because I know you need a sign-in sheet. Okay, we're passing along. But Mr. Katz, why don't you start? Name and address in two minutes. Thank you.
David Katz, 1931 Pendennis Drive. Mr. Chairman, members of the council. I appreciate the opportunity to speak this evening. I certainly want to applaud the administration and the sponsors of this bill because I think it's clear from the testimony you heard this evening that the need for workforce housing in the county is severe. I think that there has been good conversation from the balance of the council and several good issues about the legislation because I think it doesn't go far enough. I think that—I think that given the demand in the county, I think there needs to be a focus on—and the competitiveness for tax credit financing, which is essential to these types of projects. I think there needs to be a deeper dive into—the types and the right parcels for this type of development, focusing on priority funding areas, focusing on areas with public water and public sewer, focusing on qualified census tracts and community of opportunities, all issues that score well with the tax credit application. You know, base zoning—it matters, but it really doesn't when it comes to these types of tax credit applications. So, I don't think the bill goes far enough. I do wanna throw some numbers at you really quick. You know, and I know—I've got brief time. And I don't think it's emphasized enough that—as the county gets tougher and tougher with development, it has a negative impact on the minorities within our county. Right now, the African-American community makes 25% less than the Caucasian community does. With the median house price continuing to rise, up to $360,000 a year—I'm sorry, $360,000 for a home, with the median rental price being $2,000 a month, with the median daycare price being $1,400 in the county, if you work backwards with the math, it is impossible for our minorities to afford to live in this county. And as a result, you're seeing a significant decline in population, 16% from the African-American community. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Katz. Ms. Flegston?
Yes, I'm Ann Flegston, Executive Director of Growth Action Network. I live at 1337 Kinlock Circle in Arnold. I'm not gonna talk about the need for affordable housing except to say this bill is a drop in the bucket. If you're gonna do all this and excite and panic neighbors who are very proud of their traditional neighborhoods because they don't know where this is gonna go, why would you just wanna do it through the federal program, the state program, that requires so many—so many requirements? You're gonna save 60 people? You're gonna have 60 units in two years? I think—if—the communities that I work with, lots of neighbors, lots of environmentalists who are very concerned about not just what will happen with the program in Kathy Cloke's Wheel Shop—Wheel, whatever you say. She—oh, and I'm sorry. These are questions that we've all had, about—not quite 20. I think you need a bigger vision. I'm agreeing with both the gentlemen here. You don't—you don't have to sacrifice the environment or most communities or—and still do better than you're doing with this bill. But you need to build a consensus. You need to get people who are opposed, people who are for this, people in between—that are all trying to solve a problem. And that's what I think is missing here. I didn't hear about this until 10 days ago, too. So, none of us were included. When you're not included, you feel completely like you don't know a thing. And the moratorium is the biggest thing to me. The moratorium on zoning was put in because we wanted to let the county have some land to plan for, not have everything zoned by the time they were doing the GDP. Technically, this is a land use text amendment? Okay. It's a text amendment, but it's a rezoning. And if you live next to a 22-density site, you'll feel it's a rezoning.
Thank you.
So, I—I think you need more dialogue with everybody.
Thank you. Madam Secretary, is the microphone okay now?
I think so.
Okay. I just wanna make sure everyone gets their opportunity. Mr. Spadaro?
Yes, my name is Paul Spadaro. I'm president of the Magathie River Association, and I like to express my opposition to this particular bill. As many of you know, I speak for the environment. I usually do not come to the council meetings. And if I do come to the council meeting, I have something to say. So, this bill has inspired me to come here. And why am I here? I'm here because of the 22—the R-22. I would be opposed to R-22 if it was just plain ordinary townhouses that Gary Koch put in in Pasadena. We don't need to have this density in this community. There are so many issues that are relating to overdevelopment. Mr. Perisic, you know, when you first started here, it took you X amount of time to come to this council meeting a few years ago. Now, it's even longer. So, what does that mean? There is a little bit of distrust that I have doing this for 20 years when the county says, "We got it covered." When they say we—that nothing else could happen when we put in 20—you know, changed the zoning. There's a little distrust because I've seen this happen where all of a sudden, special exemptions come on pieces of property where all of a sudden, they could build on it when they couldn't build it before. And who suffers from that? It's all these people that live on these arterial roads and branch roads that go into Ritchie Highway, College Parkway, and Mountain Road. So, I'm not saying we may or may not need this type of housing. I would be opposed to the density of the housing. There is no benefit to a tree. It doesn't matter whether you are being cut down because of a school, a townhouse, or a single-family house. That has a consequence on our environment, and we have ignored that for decades. You need to rethink this and reconsider it.
Thank you. Yes, sir. Name and address in two minutes.
William Jeffrey Hill, 613 Emerson Place, Severna Park. I just wanna say that I've lived in Severna Park for 12 years. I'm a proud varsity football player, parent, and graduate of 2019. I'm in support of this bill. And I just wanted to talk a little bit. My wife is—also works at Ruth Easton—Parker Ruth Easton. A number of her coworkers live in what I would call unofficial rentals in Severna Park, in basements of houses, that because they cannot afford housing in legitimate apartments or housing. The median—right now, in Anaronda County, the percentage is 45%. Our people living in the county are rent burdened. There is—I also wanted to say that I work for a contractor that I've been working in affordable housing for the last 12 years. I work for—our clients are Penrose Homes for America and Enterprise. These projects—the quality of these projects, because of the standards that the state have, you would not know the difference between market rate, that they would be affordable. These—also, our projects provide jobs for our communities. We work and provide local opportunities for employment also. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. This panel is dismissed. This is the last call for anybody who'd like to testify that has not signed up. Again, Madam Secretary, we'll hand you a sheet of paper for name, address in two minutes. Once again, last call if anyone'd like to testify on this bill. Ms. Pratt, if you'd like to begin. Name, address in two minutes, and then we'll work our way down to Ms. Johnson. Thank you.
Hello, my name is Toni Pratt. I live at 32 Juliana Circle East in Annapolis, Maryland. And I wasn't gonna speak tonight, but I couldn't hold my peace. I live on affordable housing property. It's a lease-to-purchase property. I've lived in Annapolis all of my life, all 50 years. I wouldn't have been able to buy a house had not it been for Homes of America offering a lease-to-purchase property in our city. I sat here and I listened to people talk about changing the character of their neighborhoods. I sat here and I listened to people talk about having community meetings. But how many community meetings have we had when we build half of a million-dollar homes and houses? How many community meetings do we have when crime happens in those affluent neighborhoods? A lot of crime isn't in those neighborhoods because they come to our neighborhoods. Affordable housing is needed for everybody. I work, my husband works, he has a business, a small business, and we deserve to live here. We deserve, just like anybody else, who lives here and is safe and has a nice place to live. We aren't slums. We deserve a place, just like everybody else. And maybe not today, but you don't know—if you have kids, where your kids will end up at. And a vote to know may be a vote tonight to say that your kids might not have a place to stay. Thank you.
Thank you. Next. Name and address, ma'am.
This is hon? Okay. Sorry. My name is Lauren Willis. I—443 Redford Drive in Severna Park, Maryland. I am here tonight in—to express my—I guess—I'm sorry. Not—not very well spoken at the moment. I—I'm against the bill as it currently stands. I think that there is certainly a lot of room for the type of housing that this—or need for this type of housing in the community. But I think that there hasn't been a lot of thoroughness in preparing the bill and what the implications that could have throughout all the different sects of the community. There are areas of the county that are not developed hardly at all yet, and there are areas of the community where there are infill lots everywhere you look. I'm unfortunately in one of the areas where there are infill lots. I actually am from the Chart Ridge community in Severna Park. And as some of you may know, that we had previously, just last year, gone through well over 20 hearings in an appeal suing the county and the developer over the impact that a proposed—or proposed development was going to have on the homes in our community, specifically the water runoff. And we went through hell and high water—excuse my language—to get through that and to try to state our case and the impact it was going to have and to demonstrate that the county's requirements for runoff management were not adequate. And even though the book says certain things, that it didn't meet what was actually happening in true life when you came out to the site. It was much different than in the book. And I just think that there is not a lot of thought that has gone through—the details that are needed. And I'd encourage you to work to pass something that has a little further detail provided.
Yes, sir. Name and address. Thanks, ma'am.
Tim Groome, 411 Willow Bend Drive, Glen Burnie, Maryland. Housing is definitely something that's become a big issue in current times, and some issue that I've evolved on myself even listening to people talk tonight. I mean, I—I think this bill has some merit, but I think it's something that you all should go back and work on because I don't think it addresses the poorest of the population. It kinda seems like a somewhat—you know, it's people kinda on the cusp, maybe of middle class a little bit, but not quite there, and this may help prop them up to that. But I don't see this helping the poorest of the population that really needs the help to try to prop themselves up a little more. And it's something I think you all should go back and work on and talk about and figure out how you can get those folks up that need more help maybe than these folks that are close to the middle-class bracket but not quite there. So, hopefully, you all can join together on that, not pass this version of the bill, but pass a version of it that makes a little more sense, that works with the poorer populations in this county. And thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Johnson?
Julie Johnson, P.O., Box 6634, Annapolis, Maryland. To all the members of the audience, I want to thank you for coming. You took the time and the trouble to bring forth your ideas, your feelings, your responses. And some of you wouldn't know that there have been times when I was the only member of the public in this room. So, I care that you come, and I plead with you, "Come again." This council is responsive. They do listen. And I do believe that they will hear your words. I may be wrong, but I think that they—they do care. The—yeah, they care. They're all sweet. But—but I do wanna say to you, I think the bill is seriously inadequate. We're looking at tens—over 10,000 people who don't have homes. And yes, it's just jolly good to come up with 60 additional homes, but that's not enough, folks. How many years does it take to get to 10,000? We need to reevaluate our approach. And there are people who say, "You always testify against the real estate guys because you hate them." No, I don't hate them. They're cute and charming, and they do provide important services. Everybody wants a home. But we are allowing the concentration of too much wealth and too much power in the hands of those people who are building—they're—they're gluttoning our market with unaffordable housing. $600,000, $500,000, $1 million. And they completely ignore the people that are essential to our community, the people who work ordinary jobs. And so, I ask you, please—
Thank you, Ms. Johnson.
—keep working on affordable housing, but this needs more work. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Johnson. This panel is dismissed. This panel is dismissed. Seeing no other movement in the audience, the public hearing on Bill 5419 is now closed. Madam Secretary, could you please read the title of Bill Number 5419?
Bill Number 5419, An Ordinance Concerning Zoning Workforce Housing.
Okay, this is an opportunity for council members, if you'd like to have any discussion before any votes or amendments. Is there anyone that would like to say a few words with Councilwoman Lacy? We'll start with you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I would just like to make a comment that, to a couple of the points that members of the public raised, and thank you all for coming. I think, just as Ms. Johnson said, it's nice to see you all here, and I believe we're here doing the work that sustains a civil, civic society. So I appreciate all of you engaging here tonight. I think a couple of points are good ones that I want you to know, that at least I hear, and I think others hear also, but one being that there's some sense that this bill jumps ahead of the Citizens Advisory Committee and GDP process. And I, I would tend to be concerned about that, and that's a concern that I have raised, except that, in this particular case, with this particular bill, there's already a history to go by, and we already know what the results of that history were. And that's been made part of the record this evening. And so I greatly respect the work that the CAC is doing and your, your commitment as volunteers and your time. I don't see this bill as being inconsistent with where that plan is going to go. And I believe then that's a good enough reason to go ahead and move forward with this type of change that I do fully expect is going to be worked into the GDP ultimately, because we will have provisions there for workforce housing, for affordable housing, for greater accessibility, for folks with disabilities, for, all kinds of things are going to be in there, and this is one of them that will be there. And so I appreciated the words of the representative from the NAACP who said, "Although the bill is modest, it is a step in the right direction." And I'd prefer to take that step now and take bigger steps after, and just go ahead and get this one rolling, because you won't get anywhere without taking that first step.
Councilwoman Volkey?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I, I just want to echo what Councilwoman Fiedler said. I would have loved to have had an opportunity to be involved in sort of the drafting and planning of this bill. Unfortunately, I got it along with the rest of the public when it came out, and I learned of it when the press release was put out indicating that the council had worked with the county executive to do this. So I would have loved to have had the opportunity to weigh in on this, on the front end. With that being said, there are a number of things that I think do need some work in this bill, but I don't want to belittle the idea that 60 units is all this bill is going to do, because that's 60 people, and that's 60 families. And I agree that that is a step in the right direction, and even if that doesn't solve the whole problem, it's part of it. But I do think that there are a number of things in this bill that need to be looked at and addressed, which is why I'm going to be offering some amendments, and depending on how those go, may even ask that we hold this bill to continue to look at it and work on it. Because what is stunning to me is sort of the coalition that's come together. We've got the folks from ACT here, which is tremendous, the MBIA, which is the Maryland Building Industry Association, they've actually written a letter in support of this, the NAACP is in support of it. But on the other side, some of the main voices for slowing down growth in this county, GAN, the Arnold Preservation Council, the Broadneck Coalition, the Greater Severna Park Council, they've all come out and indicated that they also have some concerns about this. I would like to try to find something that we all can get together on and that we all can reach a consensus on, because I agree with what the lady from Severna Park mentioned, where she asked for unanimity, unanimity, excuse me. I think that would be tremendous for us. So I do hope that we can get that opportunity. Again, I would have loved to have had the shot to be involved with this on the front end, and I would ask that hopefully we get that chance in the future on other legislation like this.
Thank you. Councilwoman Fiedler?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I don't see Mr. Snowden in the room anymore, but I do want to thank him for his kind words, if he's still here. Thank you. I think the fact that we're having a very civil discussion in this room is a testament to this council. I also want to address Delegate Hanson, who made a comment that voting against this was voting against the people. I just want to reiterate that my concern continues to be the structures, not the people, and the density, because we are, again, we're right before the GDP, and comprehensive zoning and density continues to be a concern in my district. That, that said, I will be offering some amendments very shortly. Thank you.
Councilwoman Hare?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'll sound, I'll try not to sound like a broken record. I agree this bill has what I'll call good bones. I would also have loved the opportunity to be involved from the beginning, as opposed to, you know, an hour before it was introduced. But notwithstanding that, I do recognize the need, and I do think this is an important step in the right direction, with a few tweaks. I think the administration would have my support and potentially a unanimous vote on the council. So I will be offering one amendment tonight, but I, to the extent, again, as Councilwoman Volkey said, that things, maybe the amendments are not acceptable or whatnot, it would be great if we could hold the vote for a couple of weeks. We have a work session next week, and I think that would be the ideal time for the entire council to be able to work together and, and sort of come to consensus on maybe areas of disagreement such that we can put forth a bill that the entire council has had a hand in and is proud of. So with that, that's all I have.
Councilwoman Rodgian?
I just wanted to make a couple remarks as well. I think this, the conversation we've had tonight brings together, or brings to our attention the sort of natural dispute or the natural tension between the desire to not overdevelop, but also to create affordable housing. Those are two very important goals that I think many of us on this council really want to achieve. However, the way that you do that is through density. The way that you don't overdevelop, the way that you leave green space is through higher density. In fact, if you are one of the people that lives in a higher-density living space, if you live in an apartment building or a high-rise condo, when you calculate things per person, you are making a smaller environmental footprint than someone like me who lives in a single-family home. So when we're talking about environmental issues, I think we need to actually look at the, at the value of higher density. Higher density, especially when can be, when it can be combined with transit, which I think we will be working on over the next few years as this council progresses, is environmentally the optimal way to go. So I think a number of folks have mentioned that this bill does not address all of the needs. That is absolutely correct. I mean, I think we, we've heard that there are, you know, over 10,000 people that are rent burdened or waiting for rental assistance, and we cannot meet all of them with this bill. But there are other pieces of legislation coming forward that we will be, that we will be looking at to address further issues. I've also heard the concerns about traffic come up over and over again. Well, right now, we have employees that work in the county that have to commute all the way across the county to get to their position, because they can't afford to live here. We can actually reduce traffic by putting people near where they work. We may not be able to get them right next door, but if we can take their 30-mile commute that spans the county and turn it into a five-mile commute, a five-mile commute along public transit, we could do a lot to address traffic. So I think that, again, higher density actually can help resolve traffic concerns as well. I've heard concerns about the opportunity to be heard and the notice that was given. I just want to clarify for the record that the, that this bill has followed all the procedures that are required by law, in terms of the timing from when it was introduced on, I believe, June 3rd. The notice was posted the very next day. There were multiple social media posts by the county executive, I think it was in the newspaper. The notice for this hearing was published in the newspaper several times. So I understand that, you know, not everyone is following all of those things, but we're also taking the steps that are required by law and trying to do our best to, you know, let people know what's going on in this council. I've heard a lot of concerns about school pa, school capacity. This bill specifically does not make any sort of exception for school capacity. If a developer goes forward, they still have to meet the school capacity, the traffic and road tests, so all of those public facility tests are met by this, by this development or by this piece of legislation. I think all of those things make this a very worthwhile bill. Yes, we need to do more than what this bill does today. We need to do a lot more, but this is a, an important first step.
Thank you. Councilwoman Pickard?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman. And thank you, Ms. Rodgian, for pointing out, some of the concerns in the room were about the transparency and the notice given about this bill. I would invite everyone to come every first and third Monday of the month to our county council meetings, except for August, we will be taking a recess. And you might want to look in the next couple days, because the bill's introduced tonight will be up for your perusal. And to my colleagues who are, were concerned about their involvement, the bill was introduced on June 3rd, and I understand there are some amendments coming that I have not seen and would have been happy to discuss on June 4th, 5th, 6th, 7th. So that'll, it'll be, I'll be hard pressed to, I do have Ms. Fiedler's amendments, and we have discussed them together, so, but I don't have any other amendments in front of me. It'll be hard to make a quick decision on amendments tonight that I have not had the opportunity to discuss.
Thank you. Seeing no further discussion, I'm just going to wrap up. I'd like to thank the public for coming out. Certainly, I think there's more work that will be done, whether this bill passes or not, and the only thing I'm going to say, "If not now, when?" I'll just leave it at that. I'm going to move on to amendments. Madam Secretary, we do have a couple amendments. Please read Amendment Number One.
Amendment Number One, this amendment changes a conditional use requirement for workforce housing to require that at least 40% of the homeownership units be occupied by a household with an income that does not exceed 120% of the adjusted median, median income.
Is there a motion to adopt this amendment?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, this is being put forward by Councilwoman Hare. You have the floor.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. This amendment, I believe, should be in front of everybody. This gets to the point we had earlier about the, the median income, what it's set at, and the intent of the bill. As I said, I think the intent of the bill is a good one, but I want to make sure that we are helping the, the people that we are setting out to help. The Capital Gazette article that was out this morning has quotes from our county executive saying that this workforce housing bill could allow for more people like firefighters or teachers to, who work in the county, to live in the county. There are quotes as well from the teachers' union referencing the fact that this bill will hopefully help teachers. My concern is that setting the homeownership maximum at 100% of the median income actually excludes a good portion of, of teachers. If we have two teachers, a couple, who want to buy a house in one of these units, they would actually make too much money. If we have a police officer and a teacher who are married and want to purchase a home in this community, they make too much money. And, and so I feel, and this is, and this is, by the way, we're talking about two teachers fresh out of college would make too much money to purchase a home in this house. So I'm not talking about a teacher who, who has been in the, in the system for 10 years and is making more money. I actually reached out to our, to our education department, the Anorono County Public Schools, and says that, we received back that as of this moment, a new teacher coming to Anorono County Public Schools out of college with a bachelor's degree would earn $46,898. So if you have a husband and wife, fresh out of college, who are looking to purchase a home, they would be in excess of this threshold set here, and that, to me, seems to defeat the purpose of the entire bill. So I think by raising the maximum income level to 120%, we're actually going to catch more of those teachers, police, firefighters, et cetera, that we are trying to capture in this homeownership piece of it. This does not touch the, the rental side. I understand that there is a tug here. We, I spoke to Mr. Barron earlier today, and I appreciate that conversation. I understand that there is a tug to also make sure that we are setting a threshold for, for some, that makes sure that we are capturing the people who need the, the units the most. So I understand that there's that pull there. So I've only adjusted one of the numbers up, in the hopes that we are. We have a good blend of capturing a range of people who work in this county who otherwise can't afford to live here, and, and really make sure that we get everybody.
Councilwoman Pickard, do you want to yield to the administration? You'd like to speak first. Administration response to the amendment?
Sure. For the record, Pete Barron with the county executive. I appreciate the conversation we had earlier today, this amendment, I had with Councilwoman Hare, this amendment I have had for a couple of hours. The administration respectfully asked the council to, to reject the amendment, and it's not because the intent of what you're trying to do. We, we share that goal. I think the, the issue here is we have to prioritize those with the most need. And, and I would love to get to a place where we are talking about that piece of it. This bill just is not big enough to, to add that many more people to the pool. So while I support the intent, unfortunately, we asked the, the council to reject.
Councilwoman Pickard, and then Councilman Volkey.
Well, I was actually, I see Ms. Koch looking towards the microphone. I was, I was curious, we worked hard on, on these calculations, and I'm curious to know her, have her insight into the, into this amendment.
I certainly respect the view of looking at it from the purchaser's standpoint, but you must also look at it from the developer's standpoint. And as a county, we are giving up a whole lot of public good. We are saying you can increase the density very high. When you say you're going to serve a higher income, it means you're selling the house for more so that the developer is able to make more of a profit and make, and I think that if we are saying we are giving you this kind of density, we ought to make the developers work for it.
Councilman Volkey?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So I just want to be clear, it's the administration's position that, given the math that Councilwoman Hare mentioned about two teachers or a teacher and a firefighter or something like that, that the administration is not concerned that, with the way this bill is written currently, that those folks who are ostensibly the ones that we're also trying to help are going to be excluded. I just want to make sure I understand the administration's position.
I would not in any way characterize that we are not concerned.
Okay. I guess I'm confused then how that justifies with the position that's been expressed. If, if the true concern is to help those who work here live here, and that includes not just those that we've heard about in service industries and other lower-paying jobs, but also those who are sort of the backbone of our public sector workers, and as Councilwoman Hare, I think, has succinctly put it, this bill is going to cut those folks out, how do you rectify those two things?
Again, happy to work on a future bill, but this bill is, is targeting those with the most need.
Okay.
Councilwoman Rodgian?
I would just want to point out that if you have two teachers, that means you also have two incomes. And so if you have $46,000 as a starting income with a bachelor's degree for a teacher, then two of those incomes in one household brings your household income to $92,000 a year. So that is, I, I think, while even in this, in this county, that still makes homeownership a challenge, it doesn't make it impossible to live here, and it doesn't put homeownership out of reach. So I think we, we need to keep in mind that what we really want to do is focus on those for whom homeownership or even renting an apartment in the county is currently out of reach. And I think a household income of a young couple earning $92,000 are going to be able to find something, whereas we have, you know, even just a single teacher earning $46,000 with a child, that's an entirely different situation. And so I think we want to focus on, on those, that highest need first. We can get to that, that two household or two-income household at a future date, they, they still need support and help, but we need to start where the help is needed the most.
Okay, is there any further discussion in the council? Councilman Volkey?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Then, then I guess I just would ask the administration this. I just want to be clear then, this bill, it sounds like, is not about helping teachers, police, firefighters. This is about helping a different segment.
That is, that is not...
Please?
That is not the case at all, sir.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Okay, we have an amendment that's improperly moved and seconded. Madam Secretary, could you please call the role on Amendment Number One?
Ms. Hare?
Aye.
Ms. Lacy?
Nay.
Ms. Pickard?
Nay.
Mr. Volkey?
Aye.
Ms. Fiedler?
Aye.
Ms. Rodvian?
Nay.
Mr. Pruski?
Nay.
Three in the affirmative, four in the negative, Amendment Number One is defeated.
Okay, Madam Secretary, please read Amendment Number Two.
Amendment Number Two, this technical amendment correctly identifies Anorund County.
Is there a motion to adopt?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
This is administration amendment.
The county we live in is Anorund County, not Anorund County.
I was going to ask if there's any questions, but I'd be a little nervous if somebody asked that. Councilwoman Hare?
I'm just ready to vote.
Okay. Madam Secretary, please call the roll on Amendment Number Two.
Ms. Hare?
Aye.
Ms. Lacy?
Aye.
Ms. Pickard?
Aye.
Mr. Volkey?
Aye.
Ms. Fiedler?
Aye.
Ms. Rodvian?
Aye.
Mr. Pruski?
Aye.
Seven in the affirmative, none in the negative, Amendment Number Two is adopted.
Madam Secretary, please read Amendment Number Three.
Amendment Number Three, this amendment requires workforce housing located in an R5 district to meet the residential setbacks required by the R5 bulk regulations.
Is there a motion to adopt this amendment?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
This is being offered by Councilwoman Fiedler. You have the floor.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Again, I don't want to keep repeating myself, but I have concerns that when you're changing the underlying regulations in a residential district, there's going to be a domino effect that is not intended, but we have not worked out yet. So for that reason, I put forth this amendment.
Administration response to the amendment?
Sure. I appreciate, I have actually not seen the text of the amendment. I did have a conversation with Councilwoman Fiedler, and I do appreciate that earlier today. The administration respectfully requests the council to reject the amendment. I understand the purposes behind it, however, for all the reasons that have been gone over a number of times, we believe that this bill is an appropriate approach, and is narrowly tailored, and will help a small number of projects get built. The other requirements are still in force, and the difference here is how difficult the financing it is, how difficult it is to create the financing and create these projects, move them forward. We need to make sure that we have something to address the great need in the county. So with that, I'm sure some of our experts could speak more eloquently to the specifics of it, however, we ask the council to reject the amendment.
Councilwoman Lacy?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I would like to hear from Ms. Rhodes and from Mr. Swain concerning what are the, if you could just tell everybody about, what are the boundaries on, and how it's determined that there's been a change in the character of a neighborhood, and how that impacts future decisions. Specifically, I'm thinking, you know, one possibility of dealing with this is saying, you can have a section in your ordinance that says the fact that the council has allowed this type of housing, and it may not be considered as a sufficient change in the character, you know, in a particular neighborhood to get a particular type of change. So perhaps you could illuminate that for us.
Do you want to take a stab at it?
I'll take a stab at it. Well, I mean, I guess the amendment we're talking about is only talking about the setbacks, difference in setbacks.
Correct.
Between R5 and R22. The setbacks for R22, the frontline setback is 20, it's 25 in R5. The side lot setback is seven feet in R5, it's 25 in R22. And the rear setback is 20 feet in R5, and it's 30 feet in R22. Now, the question about change in the character of the neighborhood, that is, a change doesn't swing on one element. So if you, neighborhood, if you were arguing that your neighborhood had changed because of one particular development within that neighborhood, that most likely will be a hard sell, because they're going to look at multiple factors to see, and mainly, is has this neighborhood changed from residential to commercial, or some other use? This, of course, is a residential use. So we do have ordinances that specifically provide, like, for instance, the rezoning section, administrative rezoning section, says that opening or closing a road can be considered a change as evidence of a change in the character of a neighborhood. So we have touched on that in different places of the code. But I think the important factor is, one element is not going to be conclusive when someone's trying to make a change, an administrative zoning change. And of course, we know, because there is a moratorium, more or less, on administrative zonings now until comp zoning, that's not going to happen until comp zoning is complete, which probably isn't going to be end of 2020.
Okay. Ms. Rhodes?
I mean, I agree with that. I mean, neighborhood character changes, evolves. I mean, zoning traditionally was looking at zoning as it goes from R5 to R10 to R15 to R22. As we know, our zoning map is imperfect, that doesn't necessarily happen. And so I look at this bill as providing an opportunity to incentivize what the GDP has already set forth for us to do, and zoning is the tool to use to implement the GDP. So I think neighborhood character in terms of what traditionally it is, which is a hierarchy of zoning, would not occur here, because it would be just like going through comprehensive zoning and changing it to R22. The incentive is there to provide higher density for workforce housing, which is what the GDP has intended for.
And I guess my third question, or last question, was simply, would this, is there a functional difference that we can quantify, that if we were to adopt this amendment, recognizing the logic that if there's R5, that perhaps the same bulk regulations should apply as R5 rather than R22, as written in the bill? Can we quantify the impact between, if we said, essentially, if we were to adopt this amendment, and you could only have R5 setback and bulk regulations versus R22, then can we still build any of these projects? Do we still have sufficient space for them to be on any given, you know, parcel? Would there be sufficient parking? Or would we essentially be making an amendment that defeats the purpose of the rest of the bill, or at least impedes, or impedes the accomplishment of the objectives of the bill?
Well, I would say this, if, you know, the increased density in workforce housing is not in isolation, so what it, so when you're looking at R22, and the reason the R22 bulk regs are applicable is because those regs have taken into effect, or taken into account, all the elements of R22 bulk regs, including the increased height, which are, the R5 setbacks do not take into account. For instance, you've got a seven-foot setback on a side lot line in R5. In R22, it's 25 feet, because it's recognizing that there's going to be more intensive development on that lot. So I think to just pull the setbacks out of R5 and plop them into R22, sort of defeats the whole analysis that went into establishing those setbacks for R22 when it was first established.
Yeah. I mean, and setbacks really provide for open space, protects from fire, and provides for road allowance, encroachment, road allocation. So I think that, again, this bill attempts to try to put forth workforce housing, which should have happened as part of the 2009 GDP. Other jurisdictions use similar densities and setbacks. So we looked at the practices from several neighboring jurisdictions when this bill was put together.
All right. Thank you both.
Councilwoman Pickard?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Swain, I just wanted to, and you just repeated one of the setbacks, but it seems to me, R5 setbacks and the bulk regulations are not appropriate for R22 in that kind of building with the seven feet. There was one that was going from 25 to 20, but the others seem, it would be not good.
Well, generally, the setbacks are greater in R22 districts, because recognizes that the buildings can be taller, and it's going to be more of, the density obviously is going to be greater on the lot. So it's providing protection not only for what's on the site, but what's adjacent to the site. And as I said, the R22 setbacks were put into place, taking into account all those elements of R22 development, not R5 development, which is typically single-family homes.
Any further discussion by the council or administration? We have a motion that was properly moved and seconded. Madam Secretary, could you please call the roll on Amendment Number Three?
Ms. Hare?
Aye.
Ms. Lacy?
Nay.
Ms. Pickard?
Nay.
Mr. Volkey?
Aye.
Ms. Fiedler?
Aye.
Ms. Rodvian?
Nay.
Mr. Pruski?
Nay.
Three in the affirmative, four in the negative, Amendment Number Three is defeated.
Madam Secretary, since Amendment Number Two was technical, 5419 can be voted.
Mr. Chairman, I have a different version of the amendment that I'd like to offer, and I believe our assistant administrator, Paul, is coming.
Mr. Chair, point of order as well, or I guess information, but I have some amendments too.
Okay, do we have the amendments available? Madam Secretary, for the record, how many more amendments do we have? Do we know the number?
I will, I can confirm with Ms. Corby, I believe.
I just want to make sure we have our numbers straight, and people are all aware.
It's going to go up to eight altogether?
Okay, well, why don't we start off with four? Okay? Madam Secretary, could you?
This'll be four.
Yep, could you please read Amendment Number Four?
I just want to make sure I have the right thing. That is the right one? Okay. Amendment Number Four, this amendment requires workforce housing located in an R5 district to be located on a lot of at least 15 acres.
Is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Ms. Fiedler?
This, again, is an amendment to try to address the density concern. It's one that I briefly touched on when I talked to the administration. My previous amendment was kind of an umbrella, or looking at everything, and this is an attempt to specifically identify pieces of land that could hold the increased density in an R5.
Administration?
Administration asked the council to reject the amendment. We did have a conversation earlier, and I appreciate it, it was today. Again, we think we've very carefully crafted this bill. I think it's well-intentioned. However, I think that the number of parcels that are already available and open for this are small. This will restrict the opportunities to provide the needed housing extremely, and I'm sure folks at the table, since they've proven it time and time again, can speak more intelligently than this than I, but I believe the bill should be moved as is, and the council should reject this amendment.
Councilwoman Pickard?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I wanted to ask Ms. Koch and possibly folks from planning and zoning, I had the opportunity to speak about this particular amendment to both for-profit and nonprofit developers of workforce housing, and the concern with shifting parcels that are at least 15 acres, not only would it, according to my resources, not only would it could limit the number of parcels, but also create a size, if we're talking about 22 times 15, a project that becomes sort of a monster or a beast that isn't financially viable anymore, but also certainly changes the shape of a neighborhood. So I wanted to hear what y'all had to say about that.
Well, defer to Ms. Rhodes to talk about the zoning part of it, but certainly about on the financing part of it. I think what the developers are telling you is that would almost be impossible to fund a project at that size. We've talked on and on about how competitive it is to get those funds, and how those points are awarded, and it would be really difficult to fund that type of project.
Yeah, an acreage of 15 for workforce housing would essentially be a planned unit development, which is something that requires innovative development. It's a higher-cost development, and it really wouldn't, in my opinion, fit the intent of this bill.
Thank you.
Councilwoman Lacy?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I just have a comment about this. I find an interesting contrast between this amendment and the farm brewery bills that we've been discussing, which is, you could have a farm brewery that's a minimum of 10 acres for one property owner who gets to add a brewery on there, which has a definite commercial character to it, and we've set certain requirements for access to that property, and balancing the burden of the traffic, and all that other stuff. And here we are now, being asked by a similar community representative, I would have to say, that in, that when it comes to housing people, as opposed to making an opportunity for a business, for this one farm, and whoever they employ, that we are going to now require 15 acres, which is 150% of what we require for a brewery, to house maybe 66 people, if you take an average of three per household at 22 units? I think it's simply ridiculous.
Councilwoman Hare?
I just, I'm sorry, could someone remind me, the two developments that you mentioned earlier, the acreage of those two? I think one was about five acres, what was the other one? Am I?
You're talking.
The elderly.
Oh, the housing for the elderly of moderate means?
Yes.
Yes.
You referenced two, I believe, two specific ones.
There were two special exceptions that were applied for back in 2009. One is located in Severna Park, the other one in Brooklyn Park. They're a little shy of five acres. One has about 90 units, and the other one 103.
Okay, five, okay, all right, thank you.
Seeing no more questions amongst the administration, Madam Secretary, could you please call the roll on Amendment Number Four?
Ms. Hare?
Nay.
Ms. Lacy?
Nay.
Ms. Pickard?
Nay.
Mr. Volkey? Ms. Fiedler?
Aye.
Ms. Rodvian?
Nay.
Mr. Pruski?
Nay.
One in the affirmative, six in the negative, Amendment Number Four is defeated.
I do not have Amendment Five and Six. Can someone please share?
We don't have it down here either.
Okay.
It's coming.
Madam Secretary, could you please read Amendment Number Five?
Amendment Number Five, this amendment requires workforce housing located in an R5 district to be located on a lot of at least 10 acres.
Is there a motion to adopt?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
This is Councilwoman Fiedler's amendment. You have the floor.
I tried with 15, so I'll try again with 10. I'm really trying to reach a compromise with regard to R5. I can't express it enough, the density is a concern. Since my previous bill was mentioned, the farm brewery, that was an effort to preserve land, this is not preserving land. And I really would like to strike a balance with this bill, and that is the reason for this amendment.
Administration response?
Again, appreciate the intent, respectfully ask the council to reject for slightly modified reasons stated before.
Okay, seeing no other lights or discussion, Madam Secretary, could you please call the roll on Amendment Number Five?
Ms. Hare?
Aye.
Ms. Lacy?
Nay.
Ms. Pickard?
Nay.
Mr. Volkey?
Aye.
Ms. Fiedler?
Aye.
Ms. Rodvian?
Nay.
Mr. Pruski?
Nay.
Three in the affirmative, four in the negative, Amendment Number Five is defeated.
I'm assuming Number Six is being delivered with a pizza.
I like pepperoni, sir.
Thank you. Thank you all for your patience, I appreciate it. Madam Secretary, please read Amendment Number Six.
Amendment Number Six, this amendment requires workforce housing located in an R5 district to meet the residential height limitations required by R5 bulk regulations.
Is there a motion to adopt?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Councilwoman Fiedler, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Point of order, Mr. Chairman? I don't think we should be able to vote on adopting an amendment that not the entire council has even read yet.
Okay, well, if we can let her explain, we'll get some time to do that.
I'd like a second to just read it.
Sure.
You have six. You have seven. You have eight. You have seven. You have six.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, for the courtesy.
Councilwoman Fiedler?
Absolutely, happy to give you a few minutes. Again, my first amendment was kind of a broad amendment, and this is my last amendment that I will be offering on this bill. Also, trying to get in line with the R5 bulk regulations a little bit, because I do have some serious concerns that what we are opening ourselves up to is a change of zones in adjacent properties in the future.
Administration response?
I don't have the amendment in front of me. Maybe I lost it in all the papers. I believe this is... Thank you. Thank you.
It's underneath your pizza.
I believe this is very similar to Amendment Number Three, and for the same reasons, the administration respectfully asks the council to reject.
Okay, seeing no further discussion, we have a motion that's improperly moved and seconded. Madam Secretary, please call the roll on Amendment Number Six.
Ms. Hare?
Aye.
Ms. Lacy?
Nay.
Ms. Pickard?
Nay.
Mr. Volkey?
Aye.
Ms. Fiedler?
Aye.
Ms. Rodvian?
Nay.
Mr. Pousky?
Nay.
Three in the affirmative, four in the negative. Amendment Number Six is defeated.
Madam Secretary, please read Amendment Number Seven.
Amendment Number Seven, this amendment clarifies that home ownership units that qualify as workforce housing are exempt from 50% of the capital facility connection charges.
Is there a motion to adopt?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
This is Councilman Volkey's amendment, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. This is a clarifying amendment. Frankly, there's no definition included in this bill of home ownership units, and to me, that's an oversight in drafting, so this is not necessarily a substantive amendment by any stretch. It's a clarifying amendment to ensure that we are putting the proper definitions in the code. One of the things that bothers me the most is when I read through Articles 17 and 18, and I find terms that have never been defined. Frankly, that's a major concern in interpretation of statutes, because as anyone who has participated in statutory interpretation knows, in the absence of a definition in the statute, we then go to the common usage, which is typically a dictionary definition, excuse me. And frankly, as a legislative body, it's sloppy for us to not define terms and to not include what something means in the code. This was pointed out by Madam Auditor, who noted that a definition was likely appropriate here. As a result, I've put forth the following amendment. Thank you.
Administration?
I believe we discussed this a little bit during the hearing. I will defer to Office of Law, but the administration asked the council to reject. I believe that the statute is clear enough, but I'll let Office of Law and maybe anybody else at the table that would like to add their two cents.
We have discussed this issue in Madam Auditor's comment regarding a definition, and the very simple answer is, the workforce housing is a use, and it's defined by 1810-158 of the bill. So if you want to know what workforce housing is, you read, anything that meets the elements of 1810-158 is workforce housing. That's not uncommon in the code. Housing for elderly of moderate means is also set out in the same way. So we didn't supply a definition because it's self-defined.
Right, and it is defined in the 2009 GDP. Probably needs to be updated to reflect the state definition, but it is referenced in the 2009 GDP, and housing for elderly of moderate means is not defined. What is defined in the zoning code are the dwelling types that will be occupied within this development.
Ms. Schuett, if we don't mind, with Councilman Volkey to let her speak.
Is this on?
Yes.
Okay. Maybe I'm missing something, but the way I read this amendment, it strikes workforce housing is, so that the sentence reads, "Home ownership units that meet the requirements of 18-10-158 are exempt from 50% of the capital facility connection charges." I think that changes drastically the meaning of the sentence. It's not just a definition.
That's right. When we read it, it removes the use for rent-out housing.
Right.
That wasn't the intent of the amendment, so the way it's drafted, it's wrong then. But the only point that I would make is, I can go back and clean up this definition. What's been done in the code previously, if there's sloppiness in the code with other sections of the code, I don't think that's an excuse for us to continue putting sloppy language in the code. Frankly, we should be defining things, so in terms of what we're putting together, it just makes sense that instead of hastily pushing something through that doesn't have definitions, instead of relying on, well, the code already has this, and it may be sloppy, but the code already has it, I think we should be looking at best practices to say, this is how we want to do things going forward. We want to be the best place for the best code.
Ms. Schuett, do you have something to add, or...
Oh, absolutely do not.
Okay. Any further discussion by the administration or council members?
Mr. Chair, I may, thank you, apologies. Given that this is going to substantively change the bill, and this is not the intention of the amendment, I'll withdraw this, but I do need to fix this, so I intend to bring this amendment right back.
Who was the second on the...
It was Councilwoman Hare.
I'll withdraw the second.
Okay.
Thank you.
So are you bringing that forward now, or...
I'm going to go talk to the Assistant Administrative Officer about getting this corrected, but I have another amendment.
I'm sorry?
We have another amendment.
Okay. All right, well, then, we'll move along. All right, Amendment Number Eight. Madam Secretary, please read Amendment Number Eight.
This amendment modifies the source reference for calculating median income from the Baltimore Primary Metropolitan Statistical Area published by the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development to the U.S. Census Bureau.
Is there a motion to adopt?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Councilman Volkey?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. As I noted before, I think that there's a problem with the metric that the administration has chosen to use, this Baltimore Primary Metropolitan Statistical Area definition. I would suggest that the U.S. Census Bureau's definition, or not definition, excuse me, but their metric on what is the median income in the county is a more accurate and appropriate metric. Frankly, if you use that metric, a larger number of people will be included in this, such that we will actually bring in folks like police officers, firefighters, and teachers. So I would suggest that this is a more appropriate metric. The most recent that I could find on this was 2017, and under the census, the median income was a little over 94,000, as that compares to the BPMSA, which had a median income of about 77,000. So this will include a greater number of people, and I think that this makes sense for what we're trying to do here.
Administration?
This came up in the hearing. The administration respectfully requests the council to reject this amendment. I'll defer to the experts on why this metric was chosen. I think, again, this bill is carefully crafted, and that is an accepted measure.
Any further discussion?
No, I would just strongly recommend against it. The U.S. Census Bureau is not consistent, doesn't always produce the numbers. The U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development constantly and always has our numbers for us.
Okay. Madam Secretary, we have a motion that's been properly moved and seconded. Could you please call the roll on Amendment Number Eight?
Ms. Hare?
Aye.
Ms. Lacy?
Nay.
Ms. Pickard?
Nay.
Mr. Volkey?
Aye.
Ms. Fiedler?
Aye.
Ms. Rodvian?
Nay.
Mr. Pousky?
Nay.
Four in the, three in the affirmative, four in the negative. Amendment Number Eight is defeated.
Okay, we are waiting on Amendment Nine. I asked my colleagues, due to the time, we have people who have to testify for other bills. Are there any other amendments that are coming forward?
None.
Okay, so I'm waiting for Amendment Nine, and that will be, I think, the final amendment. Madam Secretary, if we can continue, everyone, I'm sorry. Could you please read Amendment Number Nine?
Amendment Number Nine, this amendment clarifies that workforce housing must meet all code requirements.
Okay, is there a motion to adopt?
So moved.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
Point of order. I just got that amendment, thank you. Just hold on one second.
I was going to get the first and second if it didn't go, then we can continue and give some time, space. I just got it as well. So do we have a motion to proceed? Is there, was there a second?
Second.
Okay, let's give everybody a second to take a look at it.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I pretty much already explained my reasons for this now, eighth effort to create some sort of a compromise bill, so I would look to my colleagues and ask them to consider, hopefully, supporting this. Thank you.
Administration?
I don't have the amendment in front of me. If I understand it correctly, it says that the law says you have to obey the law. I believe, I'll defer to Greg, but I believe that's unnecessary. The administration requests, respectfully requests we reject this amendment.
Councilman Volkey?
Sure, I just wanted to respond briefly. I don't think it quite says you have to obey the law. I think it says workforce housing is...
I do have it in front of me.
...housing that follows these procedures. So we're putting a definition to something. Again, that's what I noted, I thought was part of good drafting and something that this council should be looking to do.
Well, if I can speak to the amendment, in my view, it simply repeats what the very first line of 1810-158 says, which says workforce housing shall comply with all the following requirements. So I'm not certain of the utility of the amendment for that reason.
Councilwoman Pickard?
Oh, thank you, Mr. Chairman. So this is asking to insert, for the purposes of this section, workforce housing means that housing, means housing that complies with all requirements in the code for workforce housing. So in other words, workforce housing is workforce housing. I don't think this is necessary.
Okay, seeing no further discussion, Madam Secretary, could you please call the roll on Amendment Number Nine?
Ms. Hare?
Aye.
Ms. Lacy?
Nay.
Ms. Pickard?
Nay.
Mr. Volkey?
Aye.
Ms. Fiedler?
Aye.
Ms. Rodvian?
Nay.
Mr. Pousky?
Nay.
Three in the affirmative, four in the negative. Amendment Number Nine is defeated.
Okay, Madam Secretary, my understanding is that the technical amendment that was passed the bill could be voted on, but I see Mr. Volkey has a question.
Actually, I'll defer to Ms. Fiedler.
After hearing the discussion from the audience and my colleagues, I think we have a lot of work to do, so I am motioning to hold this vote until July 15, 2019.
Second.
Okay, Administration?
Again, we will defer to the council. However, we think this bill has had, we're comfortable with where the bill is, we think we have had a robust discussion tonight, and we're prepared to move forward.
Councilwoman Hare?
I just wanted to reiterate that we do have a work session coming up next Tuesday, and I think that that would be a great time to iron out. I'll take you at your word that you're willing to work on some of these stormwater concerns and things like that that people have raised tonight, and so it would be, I think it would be great if we could postpone it just by two weeks so that we can address some of these things at the work session next week.
Councilwoman Lacy?
And I would say to that, that we have seen now twice that we've had bills on farm breweries, we see bills come up all the time, we have the whole year to do this, this one's good to go, and I'm not going to support holding it, and I would say that the next work session is a great time for us to have on our agenda, maybe how we can work on additional progress in this regard.
Councilwoman Fiedler?
I just encourage support of voting on this in two weeks after we have lengthier discussions, because, again, I think we all want to get there, and I think we want a unanimous vote on this, and I don't think we're there yet.
Councilman Volkey?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I'm extremely disappointed that this is what we've reached. I mean, we have offered eight amendments that are potential compromise amendments, many of which, some of them are major substantive, some of them, frankly, I think are going to improve this bill by allowing a greater number of people to be eligible for this relief, and frankly, the people that we've ostensibly said are the ones that we want to help. And so I'm very disappointed that we can't take the time, as a council, to work together to try to come up with a better bill on this. It's just disappointing, and I would ask my colleagues to take that into account. You know, we do have the work session. We did not have a work session in June to be able to work up this bill, because we had so many working meetings and council meetings for budget, which was all-consuming in June. So this would be an opportunity for us to try to see if we can work some of the issues out with this bill and keep going forward. No one is asking to defeat this bill or hold it forever, it's literally holding it for two weeks. So with that, I don't think that there is going to be any prejudice to those who are looking for, you know, pushing this tonight, to hold it for two weeks to give us an opportunity to deal with this.
Councilwoman Lacy?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I respectfully disagree with my colleague, Mr. Volkey's comments. We've now rejected eight or so amendments, I'm not quite sure if that's the right count. We have very clearly demarcated the areas of agreement and the areas of disagreement. I think it's very clear where there are, there's room for future bill, and I think it's disingenuous to sit here and to say that we should hold this for two more weeks, as opposed to just following a normal legislative process, just introduce another bill and get over it.
Councilwoman Rodvian?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I would also argue that we should go ahead and vote on this bill tonight. You know, we've discussed, or our panels have discussed, that the possibility, or the likelihood, is that we would get, at most, 60 new units out of this. So I think we, while, you know, we eventually want to expand the reach of people that we could support with affordable housing legislation, this already identifies a narrow group, and we should keep that narrow focus to help the most and need first.
Any further discussion, administration or council members? We have a motion on the floor to hold the current bill that's been properly moved and seconded. Madam Secretary, could you please call the roll on that motion?
Ms. Hare?
Aye.
Ms. Lacy?
Nay.
Ms. Pickard?
Nay.
Mr. Volkey?
Aye.
Ms. Fiedler?
Aye.
Ms. Rodvian?
Nay.
Mr. Pousky?
Nay.
Three in the affirmative, four in the negative. The motion to hold the vote on Bill 5419 to July 15 is defeated.
Madam Secretary, 5419, the only amendment that passed was technical, am I correct?
That is correct.
Okay, so the bill can be voted on as amended?
Yes, sir.
Is there any discussion? Councilwoman Fiedler?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I think everybody knows where I am on this. I am concerned that in an effort to do this right now, we are sacrificing doing it right. So I cannot give my support as much as I want to, because I understand the concerns, and I understand the numbers. I cannot support this bill tonight.
Councilwoman Hare?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'm in the same boat. I think this is, like I said, good bones. I wish we had the opportunity to work together a little bit more. I'm a little bit saddened by the lack of willingness to try and work together when we've asked. With a couple of tweaks, I'd be happy to support it, but if we can't get a couple of little tweaks, I'm going to have to vote no.
Councilman Volkey?
I'm the same as everybody else. I mean, I'm just, I'm infuriated that this is what it's come down to, that we're just going to ram this bill through tonight and get it done without taking the time to sit back and try to have a civilized discourse. One of the things that I heard people talk about before was, we want to be different from Washington, D.C. We want to actually come in here and have a discourse. That's not what's happened tonight. If anybody believes that's happened, then you're watching a different meeting than I am. So I'm extremely disappointed by that, because this council has always been known for being a place where you can, with some exceptions, but that you can generally work together without super-partisanship and try to come up with what's good legislation for this county. And frankly, I think that some very valid concerns have been raised by the community, as well as myself and some of my colleagues, and so just disappointing that this is what it's gotten to. it's gotten to. So for that reason, I'm not going to be able to support the bill in its current form, and I'm disappointed to do it because I want to support affordable housing.
Administration, any comments?
I think a lot has been said. I respectfully disagree that there has not been a full discourse tonight and in the days leading up to tonight. This bill is, is not the be-all, end-all, as I said in the beginning of my comments. The administration remains open to continuing conversations with folks that support this bill, the folks that oppose this bill, and the folks that think this bill is just right. So with that, we ask that you move the bill.
Thank you. Seeing no further discussion, Madam Secretary, please call the roll on Bill Number 5419.
Ms. Hare?
Nay.
Ms. Lacy?
Aye.
Ms. Pickard?
Aye.
Mr. Volkey?
Regrettably, nay.
Ms. Fiedler?
Nay.
Ms. Rodvian?
Aye.
Mr. Pousky?
Aye.
Four in the affirmative, three in the negative, Bill Number 5419 as amended is passed.
Madam Secretary, hold on, guys. We still have other bills in legislation, thank you. Madam Secretary, please read the title of Bill Number 5519.
Bill Number 5519, An Ordinance Concerning-
Hold on. Madam Secretary, hold on. Could you please be quiet in the audience because we can't hear in the public, cannot hear in terms of what's there? So I ask if you exit, if you have your conversation outside, we do want to allow everyone to, to be able to be heard. Thank you, Madam Secretary, go ahead.
Bill Number 5519, An Ordinance Concerning Fair Housing.
Mr. Barron and crew?
Good evening again. For the record, Pete Barron with the administration. With me at the table is Ms. Kathy Koch from ACDS, Mr. Martin from Housing, and Mr. Swain from Law. So it's been a long night already. I do want to just take a moment to thank staff for, for all the hustle in making sure we saw all of those amendments. So with that, I want to talk a little bit about what 5519 is, and hopefully we can continue, continued civil discussion. 5519 eliminates discrimination in housing and declares that discrimination in housing is contrary to the public policy of Anarundel County. Anarundel County does not have any local fair housing protections. Let me say that again. In 2019, Anarundel County does not have a fair housing law. This bill fixes that. This bill would protect from discrimination based on age, ancestry, citizenship, color, creed, disability, family status, gender identity or expression, marital status, national origin, race, religion, sex, sexual orientation, or source of income. What this bill would not do is would not prohibit a landlord from determining the renter's ability to comply with the lease terms or pay the rent. This bill also clarifies that discrimination with respect to certain age-related housing, such as assisted living facilities or housing for elderly of moderate means, is not covered by the prohibitions listed in this bill. Similarly, private membership clubs may limit the rental occupancy or certain housing to its members or give members a certain preference. Religious organizations may limit the sale or rental of occupancy to persons of the same religion, and a person may provide preference in sale or rental of occupancy of housing to a veteran to the extent authorized by state or federal law. Like I said, the year is 2019, we do not have a fair housing law. Other jurisdictions have had similar laws, this bill is modeled off of a number of them. I will leave the rest of the, I'm happy to answer any questions. I'm sure there will be some amendments and some discussion on this bill. Again, we look forward to hearing the conversation and continuing the discussion, but I just can't say this enough, it's 2019. Thank you.
Discussion from council members? Councilwoman Hare?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I actually just have one question. On the third page of the bill, it's under 1-9-103, Prohibitions A4. It says refusing to sell or rent housing to a member of a protected class after the making of a bona fide offer. I just want to make sure I'm not misunderstanding. I mean, it happens all the time that you put your house for sale and somebody, anybody, comes in and makes a bona fide offer, and you decide it's too low, and you reject the offer. To me, that seems like it's prohibited under this in the normal course of business. I understand not rejecting it because they're a member of a protected class, but I don't see that as what, that's what this says.
Mr. Chairman, could I, could I add though, as the co-sponsor of the bill before the administration, if you turn back to 1-9-101, the very first definition in this bill is a special definition of discriminate. So if a contract, you know, a bona fide offer is made unless, you know, there's some other reason that it could fall through, like housing inspection is, you know, is too much of a bummer, and you don't want to proceed, that's fine. This bill doesn't change any of that, but you could not refuse a bona fide offer for the reasons specifically laid out in the bill, and it simply means what it says.
Yeah, I think the subsection four, you do have to look at the introductory language where it says you may not discriminate by refusing to sell or rent with a bona fide offer. So discriminate is that specifically defined term, meaning for these reasons.
Thank you, Mr. Swain and Councilwoman Lacy.
And it's been a long night. I do want to thank Councilwoman Lacy, the members of the council who co-sponsored this bill, a lot of work went into it.
Thank you. Let's get into the public hearing because we do have numerous people signed up, and it looks like several amendments. We'll start with the first six folks, if you could come forward. If I don't, if I call your name and you don't come forward, I need to move on because we have a lot of people that we need to get through. So again, I'll make every effort to get that. Ms. Jill Brown Williams, Ms. Trudy McFall, Delegate Shanika Henson, Barbara Samuels, Mr. Aaron Greenfield, and Dan Tootle. Ms. Brown Williams, whenever you're ready, name, address, in two minutes.
My name is Jill Williams. I am 61 years old, and I served honorably in the U.S. Coast Guard from 1975 to 1981. I am also a board member of the Homeless Persons Representation Project. After my service in the Coast Guard and before I met my husband, I lived in Anarundel County, where I live now. And as a single parent, I can remember landlords trying to prevent me from living in areas of the county that had strong school districts. They would say, I don't think you would feel comfortable here, or we don't have folks like you living here. It was so discouraging. All I wanted was a safe and clean place to raise my child. It was so hard to find an apartment, and there was no question in my mind that landlords were not renting to me because of my race and because I had a child. You cannot imagine what it's like to fear that child protective services will take your child away because you cannot find a home. It is frightening to think you cannot find a home because of your race. I eventually rented a place in Glen Burnie in substandard housing because I could not find an apartment. I was finally able to move out of that place in Glen Burnie when I married my husband, an honorably discharged veteran of the U.S. Army, and we raised my child together. I worked as a commercial truck driver and cared for my family. I am very pro-education and was very, a very involved parent in my child's life. A few years ago, my husband was diagnosed with cancer-
Can you please summarize, Ms. Williams?
I have a disability, it takes me a little while.
Sure, I understand.
I had to leave work to become his primary caregiver until he died. After his death, I had a stroke. With no income in the stroke, I did not have money to afford housing, and I became homeless. Luckily, because of my service to my country, I received a special housing voucher several years ago for honorably discharged veterans called a VASH voucher.
Ms. Williams, I hate to cut you off, but I've got to give everyone equal time. Can you quickly summarize?
The voucher said that I would be able to live where I wanted to live, and I found that not to be true. I tried Anarundel County, and I wound up in Baltimore County because no one would accept my voucher. And after living in Baltimore County, I moved back to Annapolis. And I want to live in a country, in a county, in a country that does not allow this kind of discrimination I experienced, and I don't want anyone else to experience it.
Thank you, Ms. Williams. I appreciate it. Trudy McFall?
Trudy McFall, I'm here again in my capacity as the chair of the Transition Team's Affordable Housing Subcommittee, ably joined by a fellow member. You know, I didn't even prepare any remarks for this because it seems so obvious to me that to be the only county in a big city in this whole general area that doesn't have a fair housing law in 2019 is just incredible. Our Transition Committee started with putting that at the head of the list as something that should have been done years ago and needs to be done, absolutely done. To be not protecting all of the classes that need to be protected and not to have a local enforcement way to protect the fair housing and civil rights of our residents is, I think, bordering on shocking. And it's just time that we pass this and pass it now. All of these classes are important classes to be protected and assured to have fair and equal treatment in their quest for good housing. Thank you.
Delegate Shanika Henson?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and I failed to state my address when I testified before, PO Box 5743, Annapolis, Maryland 21403. Thank you, distinguished members of the council, for your service, for being here at any hour of the night that duty calls you to make laws on behalf of all of us in Anarundel County. I do appreciate your service. I would like to note that the very first fair housing law was passed in this country in 1968. For us to not acknowledge the need for protecting fair housing, we are really harkening back to an error in this country's past that we should rightfully leave in the past. When I was on the city council and I was the chair of the Housing and Human Welfare Committee, I had the opportunity to write the source of income definition for the city of Annapolis's code and to protect our residents who receive their income from child support, alimony, different sources of gift income, sources that come through Section 8 vouchers. It is time that we as a county protect each source of income because each member of our county is valued, and we send that message to them that it's not just a paycheck that we value, but if you're a woman fleeing from domestic violence and your source of income is your child support or alimony, if you are a person receiving a voucher and that's your source of income, you're welcome here in Anarundel County as well. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Barbara Samuels?
Thank you. I want to add to what's been said about the-
Oh, your name and address again, please, in two minutes, thank you.
Barbara Samuels, American Civil Liberties Union 3600, Clipper Mill Road, Baltimore, 21211. It's not just that the county has failed to enact a fair housing law up until now, 2019, but the county's own fair housing analyses that it has filed with HUD in order to receive federal funds, it has promised to do so. In each of those, in 1996 and in 2011, the county's own analysis characterized the county's lack of a local fair housing ordinance as an impediment to fair housing. And passing an ordinance was the first item in the Fair Housing Action Plan. It was supposed to happen by 2016. It did not happen, as we know. Not only did this send a message, but it also jeopardized the county's continued receipt of federal funds because the Fair Housing Act requires recipients of federal funds to take action to overcome public and private discrimination. And enactment of a fair housing law is generally the minimum step, the low-hanging fruit that any jurisdiction takes to comply with that duty. Now, it's important to remember that fair housing laws don't require a landlord or a seller to do business with each and every person in a protected category regardless of that person's individual qualifications. Instead, that requires that individuals in each of these protected categories be evaluated as individuals and not excluded by arbitrary assumptions about particular groups of people. Instead, you know, responsible real estate businesses ask, is a homebuyer qualified for a mortgage? Can a tenant pay the rent?
Thank you.
And that is no less true of tenants with vouchers.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, members of the council, Aaron Greenfield here on behalf of the Maryland Multi-Housing Association, 11155, Dulfield Boulevard, Owings Mills, Maryland. We are here, as I said, on behalf of MMHA, our Anarundel County members total about, they own or manage about a little over 27,000 units countywide. We are here in support of the fair housing bill with a couple of amendments. We absolutely agree with Mr. Barron, discrimination of any kind is unacceptable. It's simply unacceptable, and it is in fact time for this county to pass a fair housing bill. We firmly believe that. However, here's where I disagree with my good friend, Mr. Barron. The Housing Choice Voucher Program places a significant burden on landlords and property owners. You have in your packet not just the HAP contract and the tenant addendum, which lays and sets forth a number of requirements that the landlord has to undertake. In addition, you also have in your packet a flow chart of what a typical market rate transaction looks like, and then on the flip side, you see what the housing commission looks like, and I would encourage you to pay special attention to the roughly five-to-seven week period it takes to lease to a Housing Choice Voucher Program. Having said that, however, we're not opposed to this source of income. What we're suggesting, however, is that you put in a reasonable floor so that someone who has a community that takes at least 5% of Housing Choice vouchers will not be penalized and it will not be deemed discrimination. And let's at that point judge and see if the system works, if the process works, if the percentage works, and in fact, as the advocates contend, let's see if in fact it deconcentrates poverty. And if it doesn't, let's look at increasing the number. But having a flat, you know, Housing Choice Voucher Program, you must accept, of course, pending criminal and creditworthiness, we think is overly burdensome to our members. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Greenfield. Mr. Tootle?
Dan Tootle, 108 Askutin Road, Severnall Park, Maryland. I'm speaking in support of the bill, especially in particular the exceptions portion, which is on page four of the bill, the 1-9-105 exceptions, and specifically the exception for veterans. I am a member of the Anarundel County Veterans Affairs Commission, and as such, as members of the commission, do we advocate and provide a voice for veterans and military families here in this county. To have an exception like this where a landlord is in fact allowed to provide preference for the rent, for renting or selling property to a veteran in preference is significant to have in the bill. It certainly separates that away from a discrimination. And I would say also, in favor of having something like this in this bill, it also something needs to be considered in any such bills we have in the county, including the bill that we just considered, 5419, with regard to making sure that a very sizable portion of our county population, some 74,000 people in this county are either veterans or military, active military personnel and their families. So thank you for this preference, and I would encourage you to do the same with other similar bills. Thank you.
Thank you to this panel.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
If I may just, Ms. Williams, I just want to thank you for your service to the U.S. Coast Guard and for any other service members in the room. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. We're going to call up the next group, six. Ms. Sandra German, Councilman Grosso, Mr. Jenny Zito, Ms. Laura Donovan, Ms. Marsha Johnson, and Mr. Carl Snowden. If you all would come forward, please. And Ms. German, whenever you're ready, name and address, and you're good to go.
My name is Sandra German. I live at 310 Broadway Avenue, Glen Burnie, Maryland. I stand before you, our elected officials, as a resident, taxpayer, and a voter, but most importantly, as the president of the Greater Fernland Community Association, the only umbrella group in Anarundel County. I am the voice of many. So let's start. Some of you, being lawyers, know that a legal binding contract, you need to be 18 and a legal citizen. If not, it is not a binding contract. Judicial Watch is on our side. They have sent a letter stating they will file suit against state and local public officials who violate federal immigration laws. I have that if I need to turn it in. Northern Anarundel County already has more than enough issues going on without Bill It is my House, it is my investment, it is my responsibility, it is my choice, not yours. You Democrats speak about the bullying coming from President Trump, however, I sat before you tonight, and I have seen nothing but the same. I have been very upset and discouraged over the way you have pushed through bills, pushed them through at the cost of all of us, not giving us the time of day. We are your voters, and in three years, you will notice that at the poll. We deserve better than what we are getting. When my, when they don't pay the, or cut the grass on my property, who's going to pay for it? Is the county council going to step up and pay? Is the county council going to step up and pay? Is that voucher going to cover that? When they don't take out the trash and I get fines and violations, are you going to pay for that, the county, the state, the vouchers? I don't think so.
Thank you. Councilman Grosso?
Oh, boy, I tell you, Ms. German got it right down the line. The Democrat Party, the party of hypocrisy. Now, of course, our four Democrats up here are going to support this voucher thing, yet they know nothing about being a landlord or dealing with something like this. To show you the hypocrisy that's going on here, we're going to talk about Ms. Lacy, okay? Now, Ms. Lacy lives at 2110 Owl's Nest Way in Jessup. Her house is assessed at $599,000. Do you think that any of those vouchers are going to be next to her? Her neighbor's at 550, her other neighbor's at 605, her other neighbor's at 583. She lives in a half a million dollar community. Is Section 8 going to be next to her? Of course, let's talk to my Ms. Pickard over here.
Mr. Chairman, it's quite clear that Mr. Grosso has nothing civil to say, and he should be cast out of this chamber.
Ms. Pickard, excuse me, excuse me. First Amendment rights, and I was called up on that as a chairman myself. Sorry if you don't like it, ma'am.
You are out of order, sir.
No, I'm not out of orders. Call First Amendment rights.
Mr. Grosso. Mr. Grosso.
That's right.
Mr. Grosso.
That wasn't when you were in charge.
Excuse me. Excuse me. Mr. Grosso, please focus on your testimony and try not to get personal.
I am, Chairman. I'm pointing out the hypocrisy that is going on here. So, we have Ms. Pickard at 1021 Wheatfield Drive. Her house is assessed at $400,000. Her neighbor's at 400.
Mr. Chairman, again, I ask that you...
Her next one's at 493.
Call this meeting to order.
So, why would she turn around?
This is completely inappropriate and off the subject, and you should be cast out of this chamber.
What's the problem, ma'am? You don't like the truth? Is that the problem, that you're a hypocrite?
Your conduct is an unbecoming of a citizen in this chamber.
You're unbecoming of a councilwoman.
Thank you.
I have my freedom of speech, and you're putting that away from me, that your party said that I didn't give to everybody.
Mr. Grosso, your time is running, so I'd ask that you...
Can I pause for a point of order?
Yeah, yes.
Could I ask our attorney, what are the boundaries that are appropriate here? Because to me, this feels like we're crossing out of, this is beyond appropriate for speech, free speech.
Ms. Shewitt is checking, so please bear. Could you please hold the time that we had?
So, I would like to ask a question.
Ms. German, you already had your testimony. Thank you.
One other question, if we have to release where...
Ms. German, you don't have that opportunity. It's Mr. Grosso's floor. We're checking with the attorney.
The rule within the rules of procedure for the county council is Rule 4-106, Order and Decorum. And it talks about the presiding officer of the county council shall preserve order and decorum during each meeting or session of the county council. The presiding officer shall have general supervision of the county council chambers and over each corridor. Visual demonstrations, blah, blah, are not allowed. Any person making personal defamatory or profane remarks or who willfully utters loud, threatening, or abusive language which disturbs the orderly conduct of a session of the county council shall be called to order by the chair. The chair may seek removal of any individual who refuses to abide by the provisions of this section. In case of a disturbance or disorderly conduct in the county council chambers, the presiding officer may order any place to be cleared.
Mr. Grosso, I'm only going to allow you to testify as long as you don't mention any other council members. Focus on your testimony, please. So, it's not taken as a threat because that's what they're taking as.
Chairman, I was simply stating the facts of where they live, what their houses are worth, and that they wouldn't support something like this because it wouldn't be next to them. And you were the next one, and the councilwoman there was the next one. I mean, your addresses are public, okay? Your assessments are public, and I'm simply stating the case that you wouldn't support this because it wouldn't be in your backyard. If there's something wrong with that, or that's threatening, I suggest council that you read the law again, okay? But I don't think that's threatening, stating the facts.
Mr. Chairman, I presume Mr. Grosso's time was running during that statement?
That is correct.
Thank you.
Okay. Can I finish?
How much time was given? Five seconds? Five seconds.
Okay. Wow.
Finish your statement, Mr. Grosso, and then we're done.
There's no point in my point in my statement, Mr. Chairman, because the fact of the matter is the four Democrats will not have Section 8 in their housing area because nobody will be able to rent for the value that their houses are going for. So, I would like to say what we call this is a hypocrite.
Thank you, Mr. Grosso.
Don't tell everybody to take what you're not willing to take.
Thank you. Ms. Zito?
Jenny Zito, 760 Stacy Oakway, Millersville. So, I've been working, as I told you in the last thing, with a group of women, WISE, in Anarundale County, about 700 women. And I've served as the facilitator for several of the issues-focused groups. When we first started, we had about a dozen, healthcare, women's issues, gun control, et cetera. And just recently, only about a year and a half ago, we started up a group on poverty because we found that underlying almost every one of our issues groups, there was this fundamental issue of poverty that was creating the problems that were leading to the criminal justice problems, that were leading to the gun control problems, that were leading to these other things. And that it really, we need to address breaking the cycle of poverty. And I think that this fair housing bill goes a long way toward that, and in particular, the vouchers issue, which is a very tricky issue. I can see it's a tricky issue for the landlords, is so important to helping break that cycle of poverty. I mean, you heard the woman who had been the Coast Guard testify, and you understand what it's like for someone who has this possibility where they can lift their family up. And I think we need to help support these peoples in as much as you can, whatever reasonable compromise or existing way the bill is right now, to please try to make the voucher part of this work for people.
Thank you. Ms. Donovan?
I don't even know where to start with this. Originally, this stuck, oh, Laura Donovan, 114 Glendale Avenue, Glen Burnie, Maryland, 21061. Originally, glancing through this, I saw something where it's talking about discriminating of a person because of age, which upsets me because I have to offload my aunt's house, and she lives in a court where it's all elderly women, and they're not going to want a 20-year-old guy in there blasting heavy metal. I just know this. So, anyway, I would have to work around that if this, but then I see in the back here, and it talks about how age is exempt, and I'm really confused on what's fair and who is, what is this term, a protected class? I mean, am I a protected class because I'm a woman? I am just in the air of political correctness. I am just very, very confused anymore. I understand the need for fair housing, but it always seems like, and I've been watching things, the paper, and everything else for years, it seems like somebody has a pet project, it's good, it's moral, it's right, but nobody considers us on the other end of it, who pick up the pieces financially or we get crowded. We bought our properties with space in our neighborhood. We weren't tripping over people. We weren't, we bought for space, or we could have went and lived in apartments somewhere else. We bought for open spaces, and we're not getting it anymore. I'm going on to the other bill, so excuse me for that, but I just don't understand anymore. I don't understand how we pay money, we do the right things, and then we're told that we have to do them another way when that was not what we were promised in the beginning when we all put our money down and signed mortgages and did this and did that, in terms of, you know, who's going to rent the house? There's got to be some, it doesn't make sense. It exits itself out. You say, you have to be good to these people, but then you've got other people that get exemptions.
Thank you, Ms. Donovan.
Why do they get exemptions? Why don't we get exemptions? Who is the protected class? This is, by trying to not discriminate, it's like you're discriminating.
Thank you, Ms. Donovan. Appreciate it. Marsha Johnson, does not see you come forward. Mr. Carl Snowden, is not here. Okay? Next group.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes.
Before we continue, I feel like I'm decompressing after that. I just want to remind the audience, when you come and speak on this bill or any bills that follow tonight, I understand that these are very passionate issues in the community. But we sit here as your elected officials, and we are people too. I didn't, none of that dialogue came from me, but I feel the need to apologize. And I hope that we can move forward in a civil fashion. We owe that to everybody up here. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman.
Councilwoman Lacy?
Thank you, Councilwoman Fiedler. I appreciate that, and I likewise, I regret that scene, and I was so shocked to be spoken to and about in that manner by a former county councilman, let alone one who was a chair of the county council, that I likely went further than I would have had I been of more even temper. But I appreciate that, and I would hope that we would all encourage everyone who comes before the council or sends us an email and wants us to speak with them to also treat all of us with respect.
Thank you. Michael Robinson, Greg Cantore, Edward Willard, Timothy Stern, Unique Boardingham, and Stephen If Mr. Robinson's ready, name, address, and two minutes. Is there a Michael Robinson? Last call? Okay. Mr. Cantore?
105 Eastern Avenue in Annapolis. And I'm here actually to discuss the fines and penalties portion of this bill, which is, I come from a long line. My parents were fair housing testers back in the 1960s when the fair housing law was first passed. And I continued that tradition myself for the last 25 years, on again, off again, being a fair housing tester. And in case you don't understand what that is, those are volunteers that go out with the same demographics as another person who goes out and tries to rent or buy an existing home or unit. And if there's any delta, any difference in the way we're treated, that goes to a law firm, usually volunteer lawyers, who look into that, filing a discriminatory lawsuit on that on behalf. What I'm bringing this up for is that the law, the bill that I see here looks very good, but unfortunately, it's always a complaint-driven process. And I'd like to see this move towards more of a proactive process, which would bring Anarundale County actually into more of a more progressive manner here. Because when you look at a complaint-driven process, a lot of times, folks are embarrassed by the discrimination that they have against them, and they may not go ahead and complain. By going ahead and doing a volunteer, and even though we do have a commission on civil rights here, it's still a complaint-driven process, but using volunteers to go out and proactively test housing to see whether or not the law is being abided by really helps catch the discrimination that is actually going on out there that a lot of times we're not aware of. So, that was my suggestion, is to go ahead and add some kind of a volunteer process. The testers, like us, who have been trained, can go ahead and do that.
Thank you. Mr. Edward Willard?
Edward Willard, 1226 Plateau Place, Annapolis, 21409.
In '09.
I was a director of a nursing home outreach program. I worked with people with disabilities. Or trying to move out of nursing homes. I went into one. And then someone who was not able... Was not able to move out. They're still in the nursing home? And there's only one nursing, there's only one nursing home? Oh, that's only one nursing home. Thank you.
Thank you. Appreciate your time. Mr. Stern?
Tim Stern, Pastor at Arkham, Presbyterian Church, 8424 Pine Orchard Parkway. Earlier, I mentioned that one of the things we do is door knocking. And earlier this year, nearly 200 ACT leaders knocked on 1,200 doors in neighborhoods that contain subsidized and public housing. We had almost 500 conversations with fellow citizens about their needs and the challenges they face in their neighborhoods, how discouraging it was to hear parents talk about how there were no safe places for their children to play, how heartbreaking it was to hear story after story about substandard conditions, mold, rodents, sewage in the units, failure of management, and landlords to properly maintain facilities. We were invited in. We saw the mold, the rodent holes, the insects. In addition, our leaders have accompanied members of the Woodside Garden Apartments. How disheartening it is to see a low-income woman take a morning off from work because she's falsely accused of not paying her rent, and the lawyer from the apartment complex is not prepared to address the case. Members of the council, things are not as they should be in our county. We have good landlords, many good landlords, but systemic injustice abounds. The stories ACT has heard, the conditions we have witnessed are immoral, unethical, and seemingly criminal. You cannot be in these conversations, you cannot witness these situations without becoming angry. We need a fair housing law in this county to protect our neighbors from incompetence and predatory behavior. That is why ACT stands solidly behind Bill 5519. In my religious tradition, Matthew 25, Jesus speaks there and urges us to protect the least of these and minister to them. To fail to pass a fair housing bill in this county is to turn our backs on the most vulnerable. Thank you.
Thank you. Unique Boarding, Sam?
She has two kids, and she had to go home.
Okay. And Stephen Wadi?
And I'm only able to be here because I have someone at home with my children. My name is Stephen Wadi again, at 7968 Heather Miss Drive in Severn, representing the NAACP. Racial segregation in America began when the first Africans arrived against their will at the shores of the Chesapeake in 1619. Anarundale County itself became a major hub of tobacco farming, the cash crop of the South, which led to greater importation of Africans into America. Annapolis became the second-largest slave port in the country, and by 1664, every black person in Maryland was forced into slavery for life. As you can see, we have citations. Following the Civil War and Reconstruction, the backlash against black migration out of poverty led to the Baltimore region becoming the primary laboratory of deed restrictions, tenancy restrictions, and the eventual redlining of the country by the Federal Housing Administration. Meanwhile, African-Americans and their white neighbors of goodwill sought to challenge legally mandated segregation practices. Despite these efforts, racist programs such as Urban Renewal continued to destroy thriving black communities in Baltimore and Annapolis. I actually have a letter to my grandfather, who lost his house on Franklin Street in Baltimore and was forced to move. And for what? So, the Concrete Association of America could build a highway and destroy the community that was there in the meantime. And as you all, I don't know if you all have been there, but it's full of dilapidated housing. I was just there for an auction a couple of weeks ago, and I went to look at the tax sale list, who pays the taxes. I saw investor after investor. Even the American Cancer Society owns a dilapidated house right off of Franklin Street and has not put any money into it, no money. So, the NAACP does urge passage... no money. So the NAACP does urge passage of 5519. Thank you.
Thank you. This panel is dismissed. We will call up the next six groups. Mark Baskerville, Mariah Hudo, Ms. Amy Leahy, Mr. David Dull, Mr. David Bishop, and Mr. Brooke Shandelmeyer. Once again, last call for Mark Baskerville, Mariah Hudo, Amy Leahy, David Dull, David Bishop, and Brooke Shandelmeyer. It looks like you're it, sir. You may begin.
Thanks. Mark Baskerville, I'm a volunteer with the Maryland Campaign for Liberty, opposed to this legislation.
Your address, please.
I prefer not to share my address. Opposed to Bill 5519. So, and also, just wanted to point out, this isn't just replicating a lot of fair housing laws that already exist. It's replicating and then going way beyond in many more ways, such as the citizenship discrimination portion, which also means that landlord will be required to rent to an illegal alien who potentially is judgment-proof. We hear the term undocumented immigrant, and I think in this case, that's actually a useful term. Where's the documentation? What is the ability for a landlord to pursue damages for failure to pay rent and collect upon that if there's no documentation on bank levy or bank account to levy or wage garnishment, potential, you know, document and jobs? So the source of income aspect also, I think, could be very counterintuitive to the proponents of the bill in that it pushes more vouchers into higher rent areas, meaning the voucher amount must be higher, meaning you can't get as many vouchers given a given amount of funding. And also that just the higher barrier to get off of the welfare program by having a higher voucher, you know, you're trapping more people in perpetual welfare, which, you know, the Section 8 program is not very well designed to get people off of welfare and independent. And just forcing this legislation would perpetuate that entire problem. And ultimately, you know, what this comes down to is, you know, I'm totally against forced segregation. I'm also totally against forced association. This bill violates freedom of association. And you've got some scary censorship codes in here, too, that ban what people are allowed to say regarding the consequences of the bill.
Thank you for your time. The only other person I have sent up, Mr. Tori Snow. And we'll do the same thing we did last time. If there's anyone that did not sign up but would like to come testify, you may do so at this time as Mr. Snow is coming forward. There are six chairs, so again, last call if there's anyone that would like to testify. But Mr. Snow is going to go first. Name, address, two minutes, and then we can go down the panel. Mr. Snow?
Tori Snow, 1307 Beltran Court, Odenton, Maryland. I first want to express my condolences to Nathan Bowke, Jessica Hare. It was very clear that your voice was not valued at all today. I am disappointed because I reached out to all three of you, asking what it would take for us to get seven votes on fair housing legislation, because this is an area very important to me. As evidenced tonight, and as is clear in the legislation itself, there are items within this legislation that is specifically designed to alienate those of us that hold the views that we do about liberty and free markets. And so I just wanted to let you know that even though I hoped we could get seven votes, and I'm going to continue my efforts to try to remove many of the stereotypes that are associated with fair housing and affordable housing. We've had those conversations, and we're trying to close those barriers. It's, I mean, everyone here tonight just made my job exponentially harder. You know, I try to reach out to folks and try to have forums, and literally, what happened tonight is exactly what they say will happen. It's hard to have any trust. It's hard to have any good faith with this. And so while I would have liked to see seven votes on this, it's clear and obvious that as the bill is now, the desire is not to have seven votes. The desire is for this to be polarizing and partisan, and I'm sorry that you guys have to endure that, but, you know, maybe the time will come when that doesn't happen anymore. That's all I have to say.
Thank you. Why don't we start with the gentleman right here, and then the other three, if you state your name and address?
Good evening. My name is John Brennan, 58 Milburn Circle, Pasadena. Thank you for your service, and thank you for the opportunity to speak tonight in support of 5519. I'm here as a private resident of Anarondale County, but in my professional life, I work with people with disabilities to try and help them find affordable and accessible housing. You've heard tonight, both in this bill and the other one, that there are many challenges for people who are trying to find a place to rent here in the county or own. The housing voucher system is an essential resource for people who are of the lowest income, many of whom have disabilities. And to be on a waiting list for years and years to finally get a voucher only to be turned away because of source of income, I think, does them a disservice. This bill will help change that and help us to make it a priority for people to be able to secure decent housing. I wish I could say that Mr. Willard's story is the exception, but it isn't. People with disabilities oftentimes face discrimination, not just because of the source of income, but because they have a disability. In addition to that, it's very hard for them to find an accessible and affordable unit in this county as well as throughout the state. So thanks you again for this opportunity and energy to pass this bill.
Thank you. Ma'am?
Thank you. My name is CJ Musaw. I live at 3884 Ponder Drive in Mayo, Maryland. And I'm a registered independent, and my house is valued at about $214,000. And I just wanted to reiterate how important it is to have this kind of protection in place because of some of the misinformation, because of some of the history involved in some of the wonderful places we live. In my peninsula in particular, although there is some affordable housing, it's not diverse at all. And it's not because certain places aren't affordable. It's because there's a history of, unfortunately, shameful discrimination. We have a beautiful park at the end of the peninsula that was privately owned for many, 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 many years. There was a huge sign out front that said, "No blacks, no dogs, no Jews." And even though that sign isn't there anymore, that sentiment is still there. So thank you for seriously considering beyond the rhetoric how important it is to have this legal protection in place.
Thank you. Ms. Britt?
My name is Amy Britt. I live at 600 River Birch Court in Odenton, Maryland. I just came to say I've been a renter and I have been a landlord. It was terrible. I hated it, but I know what it is like. And the worst tenant we ever had made $200,000 a year with a good job at Fort Meade and a direct deposit that went into our bank account, went for his rent every month, but his deposit did not cover the $15,000 of damage he did to the interior of the house. A person's wealth and income is not a reflection of their character, and to believe otherwise is a grotesque thing to have as your belief. It's grotesque in an elected official. It's grotesque in a former elected official. And most of all, I would like to say that seeking this counsel, considering this bill, gives me a lot of hope. So thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you again. Lucien Parsley, Disability Rights Maryland, 1500 Union Avenue, Suite 2000, Baltimore 21211. Just wanted to add a couple extra things. Since the passage of the Fair Housing Act in 1988, complaints of discrimination, complaints in housing to HUD have been more about, have concentrated more on disability discrimination than any other basis of discrimination. The Maryland Commission on Civil Rights receives similar complaints, numbers of complaints against, for, on the basis of disability. And, you know, we regularly, my organization is a legal services nonprofit law firm, receives complaints from residents who are turned away from housing because of their disability or faced with eviction or nonrenewal of their lease because of reasons having to do with their disability, are assessed unfair charges by landlords because of their disability. So we often intervene to ensure that landlords and housing providers are aware of their obligations under the Fair Housing Act, Section 504 of the Rehab Act, and understand that they must offer reasonable accommodations and must not discriminate against people based on their disabilities. So one recent housing case that we had, sort of typical, a young mother of a child with autism receives a lease termination notice because a child had some behaviors that they had been working on with the child. After we investigated and talked to the mother who had been seeking some behavioral supports for the child, we requested reasonable accommodations from the landlord. It turned out the mother had already been seeking a transfer to an apartment that faced the back of the complex where it was quieter and was on the first floor. But the housing provider believed that they didn't have to accommodate the family because there was a pending lease termination. So we explained that to them and asked them to accommodate that family was able to stay housed up. So we ask for your support for this bill.
Thank you for your testimony. This panel's excused. Thank you. Seeing no other movement in the audi-- oh, I'm sorry. This is the last call? Again, last call. If you're going to come forward, make sure you fill in the seats. Is there anyone else who'd like to come forward to testify? Mr. Enright, you may begin. Name, address, two minutes.
Ladies and gentlemen, members of the council.
Ladies and staff, my name is Patrick Enright at 2052 Huntwood Drive in Gamberles. I wasn't going to speak tonight, but I wish to address and caution you about considering the issue of citizenship. In 1966, I had the distinct honor of being assigned as the commanding officer of Bravo Company, Second Marine Recon Battalion. And among my complement of 92 Marines, five were green card holders, two from Mexico, one from West Germany, one from the Netherlands, and one ironically from Canada. This was right in the beginning of the Vietnam War. These young Marines, these young men were all non-citizens. They were resident aliens, but they were willing to accept the draft, not run back to their country, and die for the United States of America if they were sent to Vietnam. So I would caution you in your consideration of citizenship to take that into account. Secondly, and lastly, my mother was an immigrant. And I would like to think that when she was here in this country, she would have opportunity for fair housing. But unfortunately, she lived here in the era of Irish need not apply. So I would, for your kind consideration, take this citizenship issue into account in all of its aspects, and I support this bill. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Enright. Delegate Bagnall?
Heather Bagnall, PO Box 129, Arnold, Maryland 21012. I want to keep it brief. I know it's a late night, but I wasn't going to speak, and I feel like it's too important not to because it is 2019, and we haven't done this yet. I grew up in Cape St. Clair, and I loved that area. And we had a sign that I loved every day because it said, "A covenanted community." And I was a child, and I got covenanted and coveted mixed up, so I thought it meant it was like a really great place to live. And then in the fourth grade, we had an African-American family that moved in, and I had an African-American playmate in my class. And suddenly, I realized the disparity amongst my classmates. And I asked my parents about it, and they explained to me about the previous covenant in Cape St. Clair. Now, it was no longer in existence. It had changed. But the effect was still there. It was still evident. So when we make these policies, there is not an immediate writing of past wrongs. It's why we have to do it now. It's why we can't delay. When we think about discrimination, we don't even think about necessarily, I know I don't, I don't immediately think about the disabled community and making those accommodations. As, actually, as Councilman Bokey pointed out, it's really important that we all be playing by the same set of rules. And when we spell out what those rules are really clearly, then we're all on an even playing field. So I vehemently support this bill. Thank you.
Thank you. Yes, ma'am. Name and address in two minutes.
Lenita Helen, and I'm from the Housing Commission of Anarondale County. Address is 7477 Baltimore Annapolis Boulevard, Glen Burnie, Maryland 21061. I wasn't going to speak either, but I felt compelled. I have the pleasure of working with so many great tenants on any given day, people who are so thankful for the vouchers that they have so that they're able to rent housing where they can use their vouchers as a source of income for the landlords who will allow it. But there were a couple of things that were said tonight that I wanted to kind of clarify. First, there was the five to seven weeks to lease to a voucher holder, which is completely incorrect. I actually took the time to do some stats today. From January to June, anyone who has brought in a voucher to lease a unit, it has taken an average of 14.6 days to get the unit inspected and for the tenant to move in. So just wanted to clarify that myth. The other thing that was said was the leasing to illegal immigrants. Although we lease to families who have persons who are not citizens, the head of household needs to be a citizen. We can rent to mixed families, but the head of household, the voucher holder, does have to be a citizen. And the voucher assistance is prorated based upon the number of citizens in the household. And lastly, the talk of crime and how it's proven to be connected to voucher assistance and bringing it into neighborhoods is completely false. I can tell you that the phone calls that we get where someone wants to complain about a tenant and says, "You need to look at this. You need to do something about the person who's living in the household," nine times out of 10, that person is not on any type of assistance or receiving subsidy through the voucher program. They're regular tenants who are renting at full market rent.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
My name is Kelly Burnett. My address is 236 West Pasadena Road, Millersville, Maryland. I also did not intend to speak tonight, but as a person, as a private property owner of rental properties, and as a professional property manager, I felt compelled to speak. I am very, so much about this bill is like perfect. Fair housing as protected in federal law and state law, I've always understood it and abided by that. The confusion that I have a little bit with this particular legislation is the definition of some of the new protected classes, the occupation and citizenship. I've tried to seek those answers and haven't quite gotten them yet. The biggest concern I have is source of income. And I've had great conversations with Mr. Martin, have had meetings, that to me, that is not an individual. Like, I'm not judging the tenant. It's the program. And Mr. Martin gave us great information, my husband and I, on the required addendums and the housing authority program contract with the owners. And I will say that some of those things are very impactful to a private owner. To say 14.6 days, that's a half-month's rent that an owner who is a reluctant landlord, maybe some of our military clients, they're going without a half-month's rent because we have to wait. And that is very impactful. And so for those reasons, I'd say, please slow this down. Talk to some other people. It is not just about the source of income. I'd be happy to take a voucher. It's the program requirements that are put on us as landlords. Thank you.
Thank you. Seeing no other movement in the audience, the public hearing on Bill Number 5519 is closed. Is there any initial discussion? I know we have several amendments. Okay, we will go into the amendments. Madam Secretary--
I'm sorry. Can I just jump in for one second?
Councilwoman Robyn.
I just wanted to respond to comments that were made earlier about low-income renters and voucher holders. I, when I first moved to Annapolis, I lived actually right over there on Clay Street. And on Clay Street, I had some of the most wonderful neighbors that I've ever had. My sister and I showed up when we moved into the neighborhood with a giant moving truck that arrived probably about eight hours later than we anticipated at 10:30 at night. And our new neighbors saw the predicament that we were in. We had a truck full of furniture, and we were two, you know, young women about my size about to unload it. And our neighbors who were out on a beautiful summer evening, you know, hanging out and just sitting on people's porches, talking, whatnot, helped us unload the truck that we would have been easily up all night. And it was unloaded within probably a half an hour. So I'm really, really tired of the negative stereotypes that are constantly spread about voucher holders, about people living in public housing, because those were our-- voucher holders, about people living in public housing, because those were our neighbors and they were wonderful people. And, you know, financially, they were struggling because housing is expensive, but the discrimination against people because of their source of income, because of their race, has got to stop.
Thank you, administration. Any additional comments on the initial bill?
I need to read it in for vote.
I'm sorry. Yes, go ahead.
Thank you. Bill Number 5519, an ordinance concerning fair housing.
Okay. Is there any other initial discussion before we go to amendments? Okay. Let's go to amendment number one. Madam Secretary, please read amendment number one.
Amendment number one. This amendment provides that an owner of a rental—of a rental housing does not discriminate based on source of income so long as the owner sets aside at least 5% of the units to be rented by persons whose income includes assistance under the United States Housing Act of 1937.
Is there a motion to adopt?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Councilwoman Fiedler.
Mr. Greenfield—I don't know if he's still here—spoke earlier from MMHA about that floor. This is the floor, just in an effort to try to balance between the rental owners and this bill to give them a little bit of protection there.
Administration?
The administration requests the council to reject this amendment. Understand the intent of it. The source of income provision of this bill exists in a number of jurisdictions, and folks are able to operate. If we find that there is a problem in this county, the council can always come back. It is the administration's position that we should pass the strongest fair housing bill we can.
Councilman Voki.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Does federal law prohibit source of income discrimination?
It does not.
Does the state law prohibit source of income discrimination?
It does not.
Thank you.
Uh, Council—officer—
Sorry. One last question for Mr. Swain. Does the federal law still apply to the county through the Fourteenth Amendment?
Federal law?
Yeah.
Correct.
Okay. And does state law also still apply to the county?
Yes.
Okay.
Councilwoman Pickard.
I'll be very, very, very quick. We have roughly about 1,940 housing voucher participants in the county currently.
Correct.
And we have about 17,000 or so on the waiting list.
Correct.
And we have about 300,000 households in this county. And according to MMHA, they represent about 28,000 units. So, we're already talking about roughly—let me get my sixth-grade Henry Pickard math out again—we're talking about roughly five, maybe 7% of MMHA's units, and that doesn't even count those folks that they don't represent. So, we're already at that threshold, and those 1,900, 2,000 voucher holders are all currently concentrated in most likely Districts 1 and 2. So, we have a high concentration already. Most of those probably communities that already accept vouchers are well above 5%. So, this bill, or watering down the threshold or creating a threshold, I don't think is actually going to do anything for giving a greater choice. Or—it's also—this bill as written without this amendment is also not going to have a proliferation of housing vouchers across the county because they are already a finite number. Thank you.
Councilwoman Lacy, just a point of order. We cannot vote on anything past midnight per council rules for the bill. We can vote on resolutions, but if this bill—if we continue with amendments past midnight, then the bill expires. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
I just want to put that on the record so everybody knows.
The bill does not expire.
Not expire. I'm sorry, but we can't vote. My apologies.
I just wanted to second Councilwoman Pickard's comments, and I'd like us to just—every— all seven of us were given these amendments by the group lobbying for the MMHA. I considered them, and I don't agree with them. And I think when they can come back and show there's been real harm from not having a threshold, I'd be happy to consider it. But as to this and also the Second Amendment, I just didn't think they were good policies, so I didn't want to bring them, and that's why I think—we know we're all going to have to agree to disagree. Thank you.
Any further discussion, administration? No one else? Okay. Madam Secretary, please call the roll on amendment number one.
Ms. Hare?
Aye.
Ms. Lacy?
Nay.
Ms. Pickard?
Nay.
Mr. Voki?
Aye.
Ms. Fiedler?
Aye.
Ms. Rovian?
Nay.
Mr. Pusky?
Nay.
Three in the affirmative, four in the negative. Amendment number one is defeated.
Madam Secretary, please read amendment number two.
Amendment number two. This amendment requires that a gift or inheritance with respect to a rental be verified by a letter or other means that the gift or inheritance is recurring throughout the tenancy.
Is there a motion to adopt?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Councilwoman Fiedler?
This just provides protections to the owner that a gift or inheritance intended for use of rental can sustain the length of the tenancy.
Administration?
Pete Baird with the administration. The county executive could fire me tomorrow, and I would not be able to pay my rent. I don't see how that's any different. The administration has to reject the bill.
Councilwoman Lacy?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I viewed this amendment as something that can be covered just as well by contract between the parties, so I don't see a need to legislate this.
Councilwoman Fiedler?
That's all I have.
Okay. Any other further discussion? Madam Secretary, please call the roll on—
Sorry, Mr. Chairman.
I'm sorry. Councilwoman Hare.
Sorry. Councilwoman Lacy raises a good point, that it could be dealt with by contract. Mr. Swain, can you just—can you just clarify for us? This verification by letter or other means of recurring throughout the tenancy would not be prohibited by this bill, right?
No, you could put it in your lease.
Okay. Thank you.
Any further discussion? Administration, okay. Madam Secretary, please call the roll on amendment number two.
Ms. Hare?
Aye.
Ms. Lacy?
Nay.
Ms. Pickard?
Nay.
Mr. Voki?
Aye.
Ms. Fiedler?
Aye.
Ms. Rovian?
Nay.
Mr. Pusky?
Nay.
Three in the affirmative, four in the negative. Amendment number two is defeated.
Councilwoman Lacy?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I move that we hear and consider Amendments 3 through 19 as a block. I've spent the last half an hour multitasking, going through these amendments that were just presented to us 40 minutes ago, and could summarize them all real fast, except I know that our Madam Secretary will have to read them for this to happen like we did during the budget. But I intend to vote against all of them, and there isn't time tonight to discuss all the reasons why.
Okay. Before we read them, we have a motion on the floor to block Amendments 3 through—what is it, 19? Yes. Is there a second?
Second.
Okay. Any discussion on that motion?
Yes.
Councilman Voki?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Just so I'm understanding correctly, so what is being proposed at this point is the 16 amendments that I've taken time to put together and have worked with staff to put together that make what I think are legitimate and substantial changes to this bill to improve it, to get it to a place where maybe we can all vote on this together unanimously, that these are all going to be moved as a block. And that's because no one can support a single one of these amendments on the other side. Frankly, I'm beyond perplexed. I'm beyond frustrated. There are literally definitional changes in here, like actual references to try to clear up the bill because it doesn't define things like familial status, or marital status, or disability, for heaven's sake. Those things are literally defined in the state code, and I'm simply asking that we use the state code definitions as our definition so that we don't have these undefined terms in our code. So, yet again, I get back to the point of—the code may have been sloppy in years past. I don't think that we should be encouraging that, and this is a sloppy bill. There's no way that you can say anything else about it. It is hastily drafted. It does not have definitions in it. It's missing a lot of information, and frankly, it's just—I don't even know what to say about the process when you just ram something like this through without actually giving proper credence to the fact that there are things missing that need to be in the bill. I mean, this is what our job is up here. And I understand people want to get this done tonight so we can have it done by midnight. We can get this passed, and they can hit the newspaper and be the front page that the county council passed this bill. That's not what we were elected to do. We were elected to come in here and make sure that when we pass something that's law for this county, that when we do it, it's the right law, and that it makes sense, and that it's clear, and that the people in this county who are then bound by that law are actually going to be able to understand what in the world it means. And when you don't define terms, and you have these undefined ambiguous terms in here, and we've got to guess as to what they mean, frankly, it's just—it's sloppy. And I can't believe that this is what we've gotten to, and I'm very disappointed.
Mr. Chairman.
Councilwoman Lacy?
Thank you. I think that if my colleague was so confused about what this bill meant, he's had a month to bring these amendments, and he is exemplifying the fly-by-night type of procedure that is unbecoming of a council member, and I would have been happy to sit down and discuss these with him had he brought his concerns to me more than 40 minutes ago.
Councilman Voki?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. If I may have a moment to respond. I'm—again, I'm confused about how it's unbecoming of a council member to ask questions about how the process is going and why certain things are not being done in a different way. I will say this. I put together these amendments as quickly as I could. I was working with the staff up until—and Ms. Schuett can talk about this as well—but until probably about 7:00, maybe a little after, to try to get all of these prepared and ready to go for this evening. I don't have a big staff behind me. I've got a legislative assistant and me. That's it. So, when it comes to reviewing these things and coming up with what the amendments are going to be, and trying to figure out what the ramifications of all of this will be for the citizens of my district in this county, it's basically an army of one plus my legislative assistant, but I do a lot of this stuff. So, I try to go as quickly as I can, and I apologize if these were not distributed in more detail sooner. But frankly, we're all doing the best we can here, and this is the first hearing of this bill. It's the very first time this bill has come up for public hearing. And it's not like we've been twiddling our thumbs for the past month. We've been passing a budget, and we've been working extremely hard on that. And again, I've had to do a lot of that work on my own along with some of my other colleagues. So, I would appreciate a little bit of grace if I could get it on the time that we've been working to try to get this together, because these things are not easy, and drafting legislation is not easy, and getting it right is not easy.
Madam Secretary, could you please read the amendments into the record, and then we'll go and open up for further discussion? Amendments 3 through 17.
We have—we haven't had a vote on the motion to take them as a block.
Oh, I'm sorry. We do have a first and a second, and so we do have a motion, so if you want to call the roll on that motion.
We're going to call roll on the motion to take Amendments 3 through 19 as a block. Ms. Hare?
Nay.
Ms. Lacy?
Aye.
Ms. Pickard?
Aye.
Mr. Voki?
Just a point of privilege, Mr. Chairman. I just want to note for the record what is literally happening, which is effectively cutting off debate on 16 amendments for the purpose of getting this through tonight. So, with that, I am strongly voting no, and I would encourage my colleagues to do the same.
Ms. Fiedler?
Nay.
Aye.
Mr. Pusky?
Aye.
Four in the affirmative, three in the negative. The motion to vote on Amendments 3 through 19 as a block is passed.
Okay. Now, we will take up the amendments. Madam Secretary, could you please read them?
Amendment number three. This amendment removes ancestry as a basis for discrimination and substitutes the term ethnicity as a prohibited basis for discrimination. Amendment number four. This amendment removes creed as a basis for discrimination. Amendment number five. This amendment removes citizenship as a basis for discrimination. Amendment number six. This amendment removes occupation as a basis for discrimination. Amendment number seven. This amendment removes source of income as a basis for discrimination and as a definition. Amendment number eight. This amendment removes any type of government assistance as a source of income. Amendment number nine. This amendment removes gender identity or expression as a basis for discrimination and amends the definition of sexual orientation to specify gender and include external appearance, expression, or perception of gender identity. Amendment number 10. This amendment adds a definition of familial status. Amendment number 11. This amendment adds a definition of marital status. Amendment number 12. This amendment adds a definition of disability. Amendment number 13. This amendment adds an exception to the proposed county fair housing laws for the sale, rental, or occupancy of housing to public safety officers and their households. Amendment number 14. This amendment adds an exception to the proposed county fair housing laws for the sale, rental, or occupancy of housing to employees of Anaronda County Public Schools or Board of Education and their households. Amendment number 15. This amendment adds an exception to the proposed county fair housing laws for the sale, rental, or occupancy of housing to employees of Anaronda County and their households. Amendment number 16. This amendment makes a violation of county fair housing laws a Class A civil offense under Section 92101 of the Code. Amendment number 17. This amendment removes refusal to negotiate the terms of sale or rental of a housing unit as a prohibited activity. Amendment number 18. This amendment adds an exception to prohibited acts that, under certain circumstances, would exempt a private individual owner of no more than three single-family houses from the provisions of this title. Amendment number 19. This amendment adds an exception to prohibited acts that, under certain circumstances, would exempt the sale or rental of owner-occupied dwelling units from the provisions of this title.
Thank you.
Point of order, Mr. Chairman. I'm just—I'm a little curious. I know that all of these were drafted. I'm not certain that all of them were going to be introduced. Perhaps Councilman Voki can let me know. But since we've now done them as a block, are all of them introduced automatically, or did you have any that—
At this point, I frankly think it's irrelevant, so I'm going to leave them.
Any additional discussion? Councilman Voki?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'd just like to take a minute to walk through what these amendments actually do, because, again, when you hear the title of it, you may not understand what's going on. So, number one—or, excuse me, Amendment Number Three deals with the term ancestry. Ancestry is not defined in this bill. There is nowhere where that term is defined. And frankly, I would argue that the term ethnicity subsumes the term ancestry, and therefore is a better definition that we should be using for the basis for nondiscrimination. So, instead of saying ancestry, we could actually use ethnicity, which I believe is a broader term and encompasses more of what the sponsor ostensibly wants. Amendment Number Four. Again, I'm unclear what a creed is vis-à-vis religion. If one has religious beliefs as compared to one's creed, I'm not quite clear on what the difference in those two things is. So, I would be asking that, again, this creed definition be subsumed under the larger religion definition. With the citizenship question, there were legitimate concerns raised as to whether or not it is good policy for us to say that a landlord is not permitted to look at a person's citizenship in the scope of deciding whether to rent to them, specifically this item of judgment-proofness, if you will. The sense that one may be able to rent to someone who is an undocumented immigrant or a person who's here without lawful status, and that person would be unable to be levied against with respect to a judgment. So, I think that's a legitimate policy discussion we should have had. Amendment Number Six. I'm not clear on the need for occupation as a basis for nondiscrimination. That is not included in the federal or the state law. Nowhere is that included as a basis on which discrimination cannot occur. And I've yet to hear anyone from the administration or any of the folks who came up to testify this evening indicate that occupation has been a major concern for source of discrimination. While I'm certainly open to hearing that argument, and if folks have information that suggests otherwise, I am willing to reconsider that position, but I've yet to hear that, not a single person. Number Seven. Would remove source of income as a basis for discrimination. And again, that is not a basis on which nondiscrimination is—well, I should say—that is not included in the federal or the state law as a basis of nondiscrimination. This is sort of a minority position, if you will. There are not a lot of counties or cities that have taken this position to include There are not a lot of counties or cities that have taken this position to include source of income. That's not really been discussed fully here, but I did the research to find out where has this happened, and it has not happened in very many places. And it hearkens back to me, the 287G discussion we had, when we were talking about how there are only 80-something counties that are doing that, and folks said, whoa, we're really an outlier on that. Well, similarly, I believe, with the source of income, at least from the information I was able to find, that is not a very widespread position that's been included as a basis for nondiscrimination, and I would be interested to hear a little more about it. Amendment Number Eight, again, would remove the voucher issue that we've discussed with respect to source of income. That would take that out. So this is sort of a smaller amendment. This would still allow source of income as a basis for nondiscrimination, but this would take out a part of that. And again, there have been legitimate concerns raised by people in the industry. MMHA obviously did not ask to take the entirety of source of income out, but they had concerns about this as a blanket issue. So I think that it's extremely concerning that we're not having a larger discussion and debate on this. Amendment Number Nine is literally clarifying language. It does, it takes out these terms, gender identity or expression, which again are not defined in the term, and it attempts to use those, this, the basically substance, the underlying intent of those terms, to add them to sexual orientation, to remove male and female, and to simply talk about gender. So this tries to be a broader, more encompassing definition of sexual orientation that would also include gender identity or expression, specifically with external appearance, expression, or perception. So I believe that this is actually a good amendment that would have clarified this, and again, done what the sponsors are looking to do. Amendment Ten, again, defines to the state code what familial status is for purposes of this bill. We do not have a definition of that in this bill. The same is true for marital status, which is Amendment Number Eleven, disability for Number Twelve. And again, we've heard a number of folks who have indicated that disability is a major concern, and something that we need to be looking at, but we didn't define it in the bill. Thirteen, again, if our true intent with the Fair Housing Act is to ensure that we are trying to not only bring in, or ensure, excuse me, nondiscrimination, but that further we are trying to encourage workforce housing for individuals who work here in this county, such as public sector employees, police, fire, teachers, county employees, that's exactly what thirteen, fourteen, and fifteen do. They allow a preference similar to the veterans' preference, which I think we can all agree is a tremendous preference and should be in there, but it adds these as well for those types of individuals working in those sectors, so that we can ensure that basically they are gonna be able to live where they work, which is something that we've all said we want to see happen. So I'm trying to add that to this bill. Amendment Number Sixteen talks about fines and penalties. I don't know if many of my colleagues have looked at the federal law to find out what this actually permits, but for a first violation of the Fair Housing Act under federal law, it's up to, it's a little over a $25,000 fine. For a second, it's over $52,000, and for a third, in seven years, it would be over $105,000. That is a substantial amount of money. And so what I have done here is propose that instead, we use existing fines, which are in our code, Class A, which is a $10,000 fine, that would impose on someone who violates the provisions of the Fair Housing Act. So I think that that makes a heck of a lot more sense for us when we're trying to be consistent with Anaronda County and how we do things here. Amendment Number Seventeen, again, I don't know what this term means, refusal, refusal to negotiate the terms of sale or rental of a housing unit as a prohibited activity. That's not been defined, that's not been clarified, that's not been set forth in the bill. And so I don't like putting things in legislation that don't have a clear basis for what in the world they are. Number Eighteen comes almost directly from federal fair housing law. It's what's known as the Miss Murphy exception, and this is something that I've had discussions with the realtors about. This is, this is actually something that would basically exempt certain extremely small landlords from having to comply with the provisions here. And that's a similar item to Number Nineteen, which talks about if you have a room in your home that you're attempting to rent out. Again, these are literally common sense amendments for the most part. I understand that people may agree or disagree with a few of them, but for the most part, these are pretty sensible, at least I would argue, and maybe others disagree, but I think that it's worthwhile for us to actually have a debate on these issues and figure out which of these we can agree to add in and which we can't. And I'm extremely frustrated that we're gonna move these as a block, because if one dislikes one of these amendments, you vote against all of them. And that's, that's just not the way this process is supposed to work. It's just not.
Madam Secretary, the time is now midnight. This bill is no longer going to be discussed. I just want to clarify with counsel that we cannot vote on any amendments or bills that will be heard at the next meeting. Could you please clarify?
Computer, sir, it is 11:57, almost 11:58.
I have 12:01.
I have 12:01, according to Verizon. Yeah, and I want to follow the, the rule of law by Verizon. So I just want to be clear, I don't, I don't plan on moving this forward. We have passed the mark.
Yes, if--
But I want our counsel to explain to everyone exactly, you know, what occurs, as I mentioned earlier. Could you please explain to everyone?
Sure.
We're not allowed to vote on any ordinance after midnight, and so the, the hearing and all the discussion on this particular ordinance is now over. We can, however, vote on resolutions. I want to proceed with the resolutions.
And the bill would come back at the next meeting?
Correct.
The advertised hearing concluded, eligible for--
Correct. And just to be clear, I believe the motion is moot, because we didn't get to vote on it. So regardless of what was brought forward with the bundling, that that would either have to be done again?
We did, well, we did vote on the motion to--
To bundle, so that would move over to the next--
Right, so that would move over to the next--
I just want to make absolutely clear what, what's occurred. Okay, so due to time limits, Bill 5519 will not be heard for the rest of this evening, but at the next meeting--
Yes.
That's Monday, July 15. We can move forward on Resolution 2619. Madam Secretary, please read the title of Resolution 2619.
Resolution Number 2619, resolution confirming a nomination to the Board of Trustees of the Public Library Association of Annapolis and Anaronda County Incorporated.
Sponsors, Ms. Schultz, how are you?
Great, good morning. Resolution 2619 nominates Mr. Jim Eastup to the Board of Trustees of the Public Library Association of Annapolis and Anaronda County for District Four. Mr. Eastup is Vice President and Director of Operations for the Greater Prince George's Business Roundtable. He's looking forward to bringing insight and experience to the library board, which he views is a significant driver to the future of the county and the growth of our children. Thank you to Chairman Pousky for recommending Mr. Eastup to the Administration for this nomination.
Thank you. And just to speak, Mr. Eastup lives in the Chapel Gate community, right off of Wall Chapel Road, involved with business relations, as I said, with Prince George's Chamber, or excuse me, Business Roundtable. I fully support his nomination. Are there any discussion, initial questions? Okay, we'll open the public hearing on Resolution 2618. Is there anyone who'd like to come forward? Seeing no movement, the public hearing on Resolution 2619 is now closed. Madam Secretary, please read the title of Resolution Number 2619.
Resolution Number 2619, resolution confirming a nomination to the Board of Trustees of the Public Library Association of Annapolis and Anaronda County Incorporated.
Is there any other discussion? Madam Secretary, please call the roll on Resolution Number 2619.